This time, we're going to go ahead and call this meeting into order. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Villa Vasquez. Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Jody Lee. Commissioner McCool. Vice Mayor Bradford. Mayor Villa.
Here. This time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Jody Lee if he can please lead us into the pledge and invocation.
Pledge and invitation to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As power heads, Lord, if we can now, please grant us grace and understanding in these times. We pray that your hand is over our city and you protect all of us, including our furry little friends as well. We ask you to give us wisdom as we partake in this meeting and help us understand our residents and help us have a great line of communication. Amen. Right. Can we please go to approval of minutes and agenda? So moved by Vice Mayor Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Jody Lee. Motion passes six to zero. At this time, we're going to allow the city, the interim city manager, a few minutes. He wants to present something to the commission. Is that okay with the commission? Do I have consensus? Go ahead, Mr. Wickham.
Mayor and Vice Mayor, Commission, good evening. I would like to present an update on the pending storm coming in. Chief Snyder's here tonight. I would like Chief Snyder to come forward and kind of give a brief report.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioners. Bill Snyder, Fire Chief. Just a quick update on what's going on. So the state and the county has now issued a state of emergency for the County of Volusia. Originally, Volusia was not in the state's state of emergency, but that's now been updated. And Volusia County today issued a state of emergency as well. There is, we are under a current tropical storm warning here in Volusia County. And we could be under the, well, I'm sorry. Yeah, we are under a warning now. We were under a watch. We should be, at this point, we should be under a warning, which just basically means there's less time between a watch and a warning. A watch is within 48 hours. A warning is when 36 hours or less with tropical storm force winds possible. What we, as of the, as of today's update, at 11:00 AM, the, we can expect to have sustained winds in our area of 30 to 40 miles per hour with gusts up to 60. That was the 11 o'clock update. The 5 o'clock update that came out did have the storm wiggle a little bit to the west, which is better for us. But I don't have any update and information on that as far as what they're predicting. And just keep in mind, we wobbled west. We could easily wobble back east, okay? We should start feeling the effects of the storm somewhere around 5:00 PM tomorrow. That's when you start feeling those winds picking up and that type of stuff, with the worst of the storm being around 4:00 AM Wednesday morning. And somewhere around 5:00 PM tomorrow, Wednesday afternoon, not tomorrow, Wednesday afternoon, the storm should have gone by. The storm is really moving quickly. Once it gets into the Atlantic and starts moving, it's supposed to move very quickly, upwards of 15 to 20 miles per hour. So that means that it's going to move past us fairly quickly, which is a good thing as far as the rain goes. This should be more of a wind event than a rain event. Right now, they're predicting about an inch to two inches of rain for the Volusia County area. Just some information about shelters, general population shelters and pet shelter. Pet shelters will be opened at the fairgrounds at 44 and I-4. Special needs shelters will be at the Department of Health in Daytona at 1845 Hosselbeck Drive in Daytona Beach. I believe they're going to open at 10 o'clock tomorrow, if I recall correctly.
Chief Snyder, sorry to interrupt you. Does that include ventilator capacity?
The special needs shelters can, if your ventilator, if it'll work under normal power, then yes, you can go to one of those shelters. Yes. If it's special and you need special equipment to run it, then they won't be able to handle it at a special needs shelter. You need to call your physician or your doctor or find some other means to, you know, for that. And lastly, just school closures have not been determined yet. I believe they had a meeting today at 3:00, and I haven't heard if they've made any decisions on that. But as of before 3:00 today, they had not made any decisions on whether they're going to close schools. None of the schools are shelters, so they could keep the schools open. However, you know, with, you know, sustained winds of 30 to 40 miles an hour on Wednesday, I'm not sure, you know, they'll be open or not. So, and with that, I think that's the update that I have. Any questions for me or?
Vice Mayor Bradford has a question.
Curfew, are we looking at any curfew or at what sustained winds do your guys get off the road?
We get off the road between 30 and, between 30 and 40 miles an hour sustained. So that's usually about the timeframe, 30 to sometimes as much as 45, but in that, in that, in that area. As far as a curfew goes, the Sheriff's Department, we follow their lead when it comes to curfews. They have not issued any curfews at this point, but we will be monitoring that. And if they, if they do issue a curfew, then we will come back and suggest.
And we will have the command center here again as usual.
Yes, we plan to, well, as of the conditions that were this morning at 11 o'clock when we had to make decisions on that, we will be opening our emergency operations center for a partial opening at 3:00 PM tomorrow. So we will have, we won't have the full staff here, but we'll have a partial staff for the conditions that are predicted.
Those are just general questions that we get, so I just wanted to see if you have any answers to. Thank you.
And, you know, it's, we're not, we're not expected to get any type of hurricane force winds or anything like that here, so I don't want people to freak out because we're opening the emergency operations center. It's kind of standard practice for, you know, stuff like that. Tropical storm force winds or winds that are 30 to 40 miles an hour, you still need to be aware of, you know, you have downed trees, downed power lines, all that type of stuff. But, you know, it's not a, you know, category two, three hurricane that's coming through. So do we need to be concerned? Yes. Do we need to, you know, kind of freak out over it? I don't, you know, I think we should be fine. Again, unless things change dramatically and it wobbles west or east quite a bit. If it comes into Tampa as a category three, then we have some concerns.
Thank you. First, you ought to be safe.
Thank you.
Before we get to Commissioner McCool, and this could be possibly a VS Volusia County Sheriff's question, which we can follow up with an email because I don't think anyone's here for questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to add a couple of things to that. We are going to be opening a citizens' information line tomorrow morning around 10 o'clock, 10-ish. As we get updates, we'll be able to update the staff with, you know, what's going on. You know, we're in constant communication with each other here. I know Chief Snyder has stepped up today, and him and I have met a couple of times along with our PIO. So we're going to put something out also to keep the residents informed. And the Sheriff's Department will be talking with them. I have already talked to the captain earlier today, and he stated anything that we needed, you know, to get with them. I also put in a call to Volusia County Utilities just to talk to bank. I didn't get a chance to call Mr. Bartlett with the Public Works today. He's been kind of busy trying to keep everything moving in the storm, you know, everything coming along. But the county has, is going to be activating tomorrow, and I don't remember what time they said, Chief.
The county?
EOC.
We have County Councilman David here if you need, if you.
Yeah, I believe it's at 8:00 AM in the morning, they're going to activate as, again, a level two as well. There's going to be a partial activation.
Right. So in following with the county, you know, we felt that it was necessary to open the EOC and to get this citizens' information line out in the morning. We'll have people, someone answering the phone to give updates. We'll put, post stuff on our website. We'll try to do a press release to get all this information out as much as we can, and we'll keep updating. And then throughout the event, we will be doing updates like we did last year with videos, you know, conferences and stuff to try to, try to keep everybody as informed as we can.
Mr. Wickham, do we have a phone number that we are going to give out to residents?
I don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet, but we will get it in the morning. We were working with IT this afternoon, and we will have that in the morning and put that out and make sure everybody knows. We'll post it on the website.
Okay. Before we go to Commissioner McCool, I was going to ask, pets, in these type of conditions, I mean, are there any orders to bring pets inside or anything like that?
Yes, you'd want to bring your pets inside, so you really don't want them out in these types of conditions, 30, 40 mile an hour sustained winds is not good for them.
What is the fine for that?
So, you know, bring them in. And if you do have pets and you're going to a shelter, you would need to go to the fairgrounds where they have the ability to take care of the pets. They have staff for that.
But is it a mandatory thing is what I'm trying to figure out? Or is that a Volusia County Sheriff's question?
It's either Sheriff's or Animal Control.
I'll follow up tomorrow. Thank you, Chief Snyder, Commissioner McCool, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
And that segue right into that, because we know that in the city, we have some animals that aren't being what we think cared for properly. And so I just want to make sure that there is, I just want to make sure that there is something that can be done to, you know, if this animal is left out or any animal is left out in these conditions. I mean, we don't have an ordinance in place yet that limits that, and I'm just putting it out there because we have an animal in distress and I have a problem with that, not bringing this animal in. So I'm leaving that right there right now. Another thing too is, have we posted regarding trash pickup before, pre-imposed storm? Do we have?
No, ma'am. We don't have anything posted yet, but we will get something posted tomorrow.
Okay. Also, please know this, that there will be extra sandbag help at both locations, Day Road and over by the Walmart, Public Works tomorrow. Pine Ridge and Deltona High have really stepped up in a big way. They will have volunteers out there from the football team, cadets, students out there helping, especially with the elderly, disabled, or just special needs population. They will be out there volunteering, and they will be loading sandbags and then loading into the, you know, into the vehicle. So there's help available there also. I asked it, that phone number, if we have an elderly population that needs that extra help. If they can't physically move the sandbags, like, we need to be able to mobilize volunteers to do that also. So I would ask that any requests come in through that phone number and then be sent out so that, because we have a lot of great volunteers, right, to go throw some sandbags. So I don't want there to be any part of our population that doesn't feel like they're addressed during this time, right? So if there's a problem, please let us know how we can help. County help has already been spoken about, correct? And then also, I believe that not only will Mr. Wickham and Ms. Phyllis be providing excellent information and follow-up, I am sure that our county rep, Mr. David Santiago, will be bringing us good news from the county. I know that the County of Volusia is very interested in being here to support the city of Deltona in whatever we need. I just feel that in my heart. So we have that county help also. Yeah. I would like to also make sure that whatever fell through last year doesn't happen this year as far as submitting our FEMA paperwork, collecting all the information, understanding what all is available through FEMA right now. I just want assurances that that's going to happen as well. And the only other thing I had, Mr. Wickham, is the phone number so that through the storm, people could call if they got feeling really scared or insecure so that we were aware of issues.
Yes, ma'am. And we did that last year. We will have that tomorrow morning. We'll get that out posted. Also, I wanted to bring up one, a couple of quick other things. Chief, you still have, is there any other questions? But I want to bring just one of.
Commissioner Jody Lee is still on the board.
Wait, I'm not done. I'm not done. One last thing, okay? Is that I want that our neighbors in Osteen to know also that you will not be turned away if you need sandbags, okay? Because last year, there was some confusion about that. We're not turning away our neighbor if you need sandbags. I'm asking, and I just say this because, you know, to not abuse the privilege, and I know that also the county has generously also placed sandbag station out in Osteen as of today is what I understood, they were doing it over at the fire department there, I believe. So know that there's help out there, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Mr. Wickham.
I would also, one second, Commissioner. I just wanted to broadcast the number for Volusia County Citizens Helpline Information Center. They'll be opening tomorrow morning at 8:00 until further notice. And that number is 866-345-0345.
866.
866.
No, time, 0800.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Military time, 0800. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yeah, I just want to thank Chief for all the stuff that you're doing. One of the residents already spoke about help with sandbags. I'm available too. If anybody needs help, I can carry and help deliver sandbags to anybody. And I'm glad everything's taking place and it's all coming together. And I really encourage the city manager to keep an eye on this weather with, with everything else, with all the people and all the issues in the city. But if you could, please have somebody standing by so that we go over and get that dog out of that cage that's going to be stuck outside, because seeing that's where it lives all the time. You know, it's a big topic. It's in my neighborhood. I've been by there a few times, and that lady's not very receptive. So if we could make sure that all the animals and stuff like that, we don't need all the headaches, you know? But there's all the commissioners up here. I believe most of us are going to be there helping people if anybody needs it. So just reach out. I'm available to deliver sandbags anywhere all over the area, so.
And Mayor, the last thing, I don't know if you want to mention it or not, but we did get word from St. John's today.
You go ahead.
Excuse me?
You go ahead.
Okay. And I did send the commission and the mayor and the vice mayor an email late this afternoon. But we have been authorized to open the gates down at Lake Doyle. So we are, we have already done so, and we will be monitoring that. But I just wanted to let everybody know that at this point. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I believe County Councilman David has something. He's so enthusiastic about sharing all that help that he's.
As much as I like to just be a spectator, I felt this was an important subject. I wanted all the council members, commissioners to know, the last thing I wanted to happen, if this storm does hit us, that anybody feels that the county was not a willing partner in any way. I know our staff have good lines of communication, but I think every one of you have my cell phone number. Don't hesitate to call if you feel that there's something that's not being delivered on or you need additional assistance. I'll do my best to make sure we can deliver.
Three in the morning. All right. We're going to go, we're going to go ahead and start with presentation, awards, and reports. And we're going to start with proclamation for Water Professionals Month. And if we can have the commission go down there with me, please. And Vice Mayor's going to read the proclamation.
Mayor, we have a couple of staff members. We have a couple of staff members from Public Works here, if you don't mind to be up with y'all for the proclamation. Mr. Jim Parrish and Shane Chertie.
All righty, from the governor, what, Florida Water Professionals Month, whereas water industry professionals in Florida dedicate themselves to the production and distribution of safe drinking water, as well as the proper collection, treatment, reuse, and disposal of wastewater and stormwater. And whereas the professionals employed in this industry commit themselves to protecting the health of Florida citizens and our state's natural resources. And whereas Florida continues to take bold steps and lead the nation in water quality protection and conservation of our waterways and natural resources. And whereas the 2324 Framework for Freedom Budget invests more than $1.6 billion for Everglades restoration and protection of our water resources. And whereas in May 2023, Governor DeSantis signed House Bill 1379 to protect water resources and support conservation efforts. And whereas Senate Bill 712, the Clean Watersway Act, passed with bipartisan support in its protecting water quality and minimizing nutrient pollution. And whereas Florida will continue the fight to protect and conserve our waterways and natural resources for our children and future generations. And whereas it is fitting that the state of Florida recognizes all those who have played significant part in operating and maintaining drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems in Florida by celebrating Florida Water Professionals Month, which applauds their constant efforts to protect our health and environment. And whereas Florida Water Professionals Month is an opportunity to show appreciation for the water professionals in our state and for all they do to protect our resources, economy, and communities. Now therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, Governor of the State of Florida, do hereby extend greetings and best wishes to all observing August 2023 as Florida Water Professionals Month. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great steel of the state of Florida to be affixed at Tallahassee Capitol this first day of August in the year 2023. Signed by Governor DeSantis.
All right, we're going to start doing a presentation on the Theresean Basin right now. And before we continue, I just want to acknowledge that we have the Berry City Manager here, Carmen, showing support to our great city. So we thank you for being here and showing continued support. Thank you, Carmen.
Mayor, according to the, the agenda, the next item on the agenda is the chicken ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, so I think there was a little mistake made. This was for the stormwater presentation, so we, we should be on 5A or 6A right now, which would be Mr. Ruiz. Sorry.
Mr. Wickham, I was told by the, so we're not going to do, this was supposed to be technically 5B.
Okay.
8B? Okay, so we'll, we'll follow the agenda then, that's fine. No worries.
All right, sorry.
No problem. So we're going to go ahead and move over to Section 6A, which is ordinance in public hearings. Public hearing ordinance number 08-2023, amending the code of ordinances, subpart A, Chapter 14, Article 8, chickens, sections 14-281 and 14-282, at the second and final reading. Mr. Wickham and Mr. Ruiz.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, and respected members of the public, Joe Ruiz, Plan Development Services Director, City of Deltona. So before you all today, as the mayor read into the record, ordinance number 08-2023, amending the chicken section of our Code of Ordinances, section specifically 14-281 and sections 14-282. Just a little update, based on the July 17, 2023 city commission meeting, staff presented to you all the ordinance in a draft format, both as a underlying strike through and a clean version, which you all reviewed, staff presented, and also we all received public input. Staff at this time believes that we have incorporated all of the items that were addressed and the motion that was presented by the commission. Essentially, at that time, it was a six to one vote to approve the ordinance with the motion included at a condition to strike Section 214-281, specifically Section 8 or bullet 8, by removing the engineer drawing requirement for coops greater than 50 square feet, and thus replacing it with the previous building permit standards and requirements. Staff has taken that. Staff has addressed the ordinance accordingly, and so at this time, we recommend that you all approve and adopt ordinance number 08-2023 at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Jody Lee and Commissioner McCool.
Okay, everybody's happy, so everybody's now happy with this chicken ordinance. We've spent more time on chickens. I just want to make sure with all the stuff going on in life with storms and everything, we're discussing chickens again. And if everybody's fine, I'm just going to make a motion so we can get this done, unless you want to do public comments first.
Just clarify one thing, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Jody Lee, you okay? You're done?
That's fine.
Commissioner McCool.
The only thing that I want to clarify was that people thought they had to go to chicken school to get a permit. You do not have to go to chicken school. I'd like to squash that notion right now, okay? Rumor conjecture is that you must go to chicken school. You do not have to go to chicken school. You may need to learn chicken math, but you do not have to go to chicken school. So I'm just going to say that and clarify that. It is something offered by the county, an extension program, if you want to know more about your fowl and how to better take care of, but chicken school is not mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jody Lee.
Just make sure you sign this ordinance with chicken scratch. I'm going to move to adopt the ordinance, 08-2023, amend, chapter 14, article, whatever, three, chickens, sections 14 through 281 and 14 through 282 of the Code of Ordinances. The city manager has authority to make corrections of the governor's errors and the alike.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner Jody Lee, second by Commissioner McCool. Is there any public comment?
Oh, sorry.
I thought that the former city manager was going to take the chickens with him. He took the money. He left the chickens behind for us?
Can we go ahead and vote, please?
Mr. Mayor, can I read the ordinance?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ordinance number 08-2023, an ordinance of the City of Deltona, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances, subpart A, Chapter 14, animals are, Article 8, chickens, by revising section 14-281, chicken permit, and section 14-282 procedures for the granting of chicken permits, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective
Commissioner Caldwell, they're waiting on you. Vice Mayor doesn't have anything on her screen either. So can we just do a verbal vote so we can get this going?
Commissioner Burbank.
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Yes.
And Mayor Villa. Yes. Motion passes six to zero. We're going to go ahead and move to section 6B, public hearing ordinance number 09-2023, amending the official zoning map to rezoning an approximate 1.37 acre parcel of land located at 3150 Howland Boulevard from Professional Business Zoning District, PB, to the City of Deltona Retail Commercial District, C1. Mr. Joseph Reese.
Thank you, Mayor, Joe Ruiz, Plan Development Services. The application before you, ordinance, for ordinance number 09-2023, application number RZ23-0005. The property is located at 3150 Howland Boulevard. The applicant at this time is requesting to amend the official zoning map of the city from Professional Business, PB, to Retail Commercial, C1, for approximately 1.37 acres of land located at this, at this location. Some background on the application, as mentioned, the address is 3150 Howland Boulevard. The acreage is 1.37 acres. The current zoning is PB, Professional Business. Proposed zoning is the C1 at this time, and then that property does hold and carry a future land use of commercial. So just to kind of give you a visual of the location of this property, based on the slide that you see here, so we have Rose Apple at this intersection, and we have Howland Boulevard. And so this is the plaza where you've got Dunkin' Donuts, State Farm, Subway, and Assurian. And then to the west here is where the property sits, located just east of the church that's there. So we'll kind of get into a breakdown of what the existing zonings are adjacent.
Mr. Reese, this is a quasi judicial.
I apologize, ma'am. Yes, it is a quasi judicial.
I didn't want to interrupt you until you paused.
No, 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 you're good. I had this be on my head and I forgot it.
You're good.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go ahead and do that as, before we continue.
This is a quasi judicial hearing. Will anybody who wishes to speak in this matter, who has standing and received a letter from the city, please stand and raise your right hand. Just ask Joe. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth to help you?
I do.
Thank you.
Mayor, also, if you can just poll the commission for ex parte.
Yes, I am going to ask if there's any been, any ex parte communications. I'll start with Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Stephen Caldwell. Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yes.
I've reached out to the owners of the property to ask what they intended to do with the property.
Commissioner McCool.
No.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
No.
And I have reached out to the owners as well to find out whether they were trying to build in the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Pardon me for that. It's been a long week. So just going into the application, the existing zoning, as mentioned, if you look at this property on the, on the map here, it's currently PB. Adjacent to it is C1, where the Dunkin' is, and then the church to the west there is also a PB zone property. The purpose and intent of the PB zoning district is to provide a transition in areas within the city. It was established as part of the original Deltona Lakes Community Development Plan, and the district also allows for a combination of single-family homes and compatible office development, along with limited retail sales, essentially serving as a transition between major commercial and the residential that exists to the north. So just going into the proposed zoning here, the C1 district is to establish neighborhood-oriented commercial development along high-volume roads such as Howland Boulevard that are compatible with nearby single-family residential areas. The C1 district was established also as part of the Deltona Lakes Community Development Plan, which is why the city kind of enforced that and adopted that zoning district to serve residential uses. Just to kind of give you all an idea of what the C1 looks like in comparison to the PB, permitted uses included but are not limited to restaurants, barber shops, retail sales and services, general offices, and et cetera. So just to kind of give you all a before, a proposed, essentially of what the after would be if approved, and the future land use. So the property as mentioned here is PB. They're proposing a C1 consistent with the south and the east, and also the future land use does align with the proposed zoning, with it being commercial. So matters of consideration, every rezone application, comprehensive plan application does have matters of consideration that we need to look at, i.e. compatibility with the comprehensive plan, natural resources, the area and the impact that it's going to have to the existing neighborhood, consistency with our land development code, as, among other things. So some highlights that we've looked at, and staff did a great job at putting this, this staff report together and this application reviewed, the future land use is, is that commercial. It is based on the FEMA apps. There are no 100-year floodplain that encroach onto the property, and the proposed zoning will allow, which is what we've received from the applicant currently, just keep in mind, all of this, all of these are assumptions at the moment. They are requesting a rezone to a zoning district that allows different uses within the C1. So anything that we receive at this time, since we don't have a full TIA traffic impact analysis, are all based on assumptions. So this will allow the applicant to develop a fast food restaurant, which is what they've relayed to us at the moment, with the required land development code requirements, which include access management, landscaping, stormwater, and other horizontal improvements. The request to C1 zoning classification is neighborhood-oriented, compatible with the residential to the north, and it represents a logical progression of land use intensity. Just to kind of give you all a gauge on what Howland Boulevard looks like, and granted, please keep in mind, these are best available data, and when I say best available data, we're using the county's numbers for Howland Boulevard from 2021. The fast food daily, restaurant daily trips would generate approximately 1,452 average daily trips. Howland Boulevard currently carries, based on those numbers, 28,510, with a capacity of 37,970 average daily trips. So in looking at this, staff reviewed the level of service, and so this segment of Howland Boulevard will continue to operate above the acceptable level of service of E. The applicant will also be required to submit a full traffic impact analysis at the time of site plan. Staff has already made that clear to the applicant. We've talked. Howland Boulevard is a very important thoroughfare for the city, and so Development Review Committee will be looking for that as we look at the impacts, proportion of fair share and things like that, along those corridors. At this time, staff recommends that the city commission approve ordinance number 09-2023, amending the official zoning map to rezon 1.37 acre parcel of land located at 3150 Howland Boulevard from PB to C1. I'm available for any questions at this time, and the applicant is also present.
Is there any questions for Mr. Reese specifically, not for the applicant? Commissioner Jody Lee, and then Commissioner McCool, and finally Commissioner Burbank, unless someone else comes on the board.
Yes, Mr. Ruiz, they, when they presented it to you, they presented it as a restaurant, right?
Currently, everything we've looked at are for the assumptions of a restaurant, so their traffic impact memo that they provided to us, which is not a, keep in mind, is not a full study, they'll need to do one, is under the assumptions and the numbers of a fast food restaurant.
Right. Now, but if we rezone this right now, then they can put anything that falls under there.
Correct.
Unless we make some kind of other changes to the motion to it. Because my issue is if we rezone it, and then later on, they want to put, they changed their mind on a restaurant, and they want to put a, just for example, a dollar store in there. So I just want to make, but, so, but if we rezone it, they can put whatever they want compared to business, as long as it meets the standards, but.
Yeah, any, any use that's allowed within the C1, they can essentially build it out as, if it's approved.
Okay, now, one other question. Well, but they came to the planning and zoning and said it was going to be a restaurant, and they got approval, and then they came to you and said it was going to be a restaurant. That's how it was projected, right?
Yes, that is the current assumption.
Okay.
That they've, that they've given us.
I'm good right now.
Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Burbank, then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Thank you. Thank you for that, which is a perfect segue for this, that we approve something, and we historically approved something for a new use. We're promised that it's going to be for this use, and then it turns around and the developer does, you know, what quite often happens, and they present plans for something that's not what they presented before. And I'm a little gun shy, because I want assurances, they say they're putting a restaurant in, I want a restaurant in. I don't want to hear, this is coming back, because we were sold a bill of goods before, and we've been here before, and I want assurances that that's not going to change. I also have a problem with there not being a TIA required, because we have a lot of issues with the TIAs that we've had in the past. Another thing here is.
Can you describe for the residents what a TIA means, just?
Oh, I'm sorry, traffic impact analysis. So that is important. I don't care if it's 20 cars, I just want to see that for our community, because, you know, that changes. So I want that very succinctly stated. Also, I want to understand this overall, because I've had problems with level of service or saying level of what level of service, adopted level of service is, and I am looking at that as far as impact fees go, and I want to understand, and I want all assurances that this, oof. I want to understand that these level of services are acceptable, because I'm looking at fire and rescue, and I'm looking at law enforcement, and I just, because we're not, we're collecting taxes, but none of the other utility services. So I want assurances that that's what's going to happen, what's being presented to us here today. I don't want any more of what we've had in the past, which will be brought up later. So do I have those assurances as a commissioner, that if I say yes to this, that I'm not going to have somebody come back in a year and say they want to put something else there?
Commissioner, I will defer to the applicant.
Sure.
Good evening, Mary Walker, Altamont Springs, Florida. I'm here for the applicant. I'm their attorney. It was my understanding that the proposal that was presented had, and I have my engineer here, I wasn't available for the P&amp;Z meeting, but it was my understanding that they used the most intensive type of use they could for this property, which would be a fast food restaurant, so that that would be the highest level of use that would go there. I don't know that the, and I have had conversations with the owner, and I can prom, I can tell you this, there is no specific use plan for this property. We don't have a user for it yet. So what they're looking to get, that what we, the owner was looking to do was rezone the property to C1, which was consistent with your land use, future land use plan. And so that's what the owner was requesting. I have the engineer here to speak to the issue, because he was at the P&amp;Z meeting. I don't want to make representations. I wasn't there. I don't know what was said. I don't know what was promised.
Mm-hmm. I'd like that clarified for the record.
And first of all, I was not sworn in, so I don't know if I need to swear in, but the.
Would you please, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth to help you?
I do.
Thank you.
So at the, Dave Holden.
So at the, Dave Holden, Quig Engineering, I was at the Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, and the meeting, at that meeting, we said that we're trying to market it for a restaurant, fast food restaurant, but we don't know what's going to be able to go in there.
Okay.
But that's what, we used the traffic study, or we used the heavy impact for the traffic study to see the worst-case scenario.
So here's my problem with that. The traffic study, for me, for this commissioner, the TIA is not the only issue, because if I know what is going there, and I'm told what's going there, then I'm looking at what the support information is. And the protection and law enforcement might change depending on what it is, and I need those, I need to understand what that is. Because in, in our city, I believe in land rights, I believe in that. But this city has, we have a rich tradition of developers coming in, using an example of one type of building that they're bringing in here to our community. Our community is told, this is what's going in, and then what pops up. I'm just going to say the old standby number A or B, things that we already have enough of. And so I'm, you're, in essence, asking me to move it out of the placeholder status where it is, and not tell me what's going there, and how am I supposed to make an informed decision for my residents, just to say, sure, go ahead? Because we've been so great at developing before. So that's why I'm asking, I want my residents to understand what's going there. I understand the developers' rights and the landowners' rights, but I just want to make sure that what we're being sold, or what's going there, or marketed is what they truly put into it. And I'm sorry, but I think that everyone understands what I'm talking about here. I'm done, yeah?
Commissioner Burbank, then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To speak of Mr. Mc, Commissioner McCool's concerns, the only way we're going to get assurances is if they go to a PUD, and that way we have a contract says this is what they're limited to as permitted uses go. But if we go straight zoning, they have a wide range of uses they can use. Now, I understand from what I'm hearing, that they've, as far as traffic goes, they've used the most intense use allowable in that zoning to determine that, but without a PUD, we have no assurances. My issues, though, are, this Dunkin' Donuts property, the original site plan called for the park, the driveways and drive aisles and traffic circulation to perform one way, and since they found, then they found out it wouldn't work, now they've put up cones in the middle of the driveways. So it's kind of iffy getting out of Dunkin' Donuts site before any development gets approved, and I would actually make this a condition of rezoning, is that before they come in for any type of developments, they actually provide a recorded copy of a cross-access easement from Dunkin' Donuts, showing where it's going to be, and if they're going to have to relocate dumpsters, and how it's going to work. And that's what I've got on the plate, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Before we get ourselves in trouble here, can I have legal, please? Can you please advise on, this is a zoning hearing, correct? Based on a zoning hearing, is it legal for the city to, I see you smiling, so we really need this clarified before we get ourselves in trouble? Can you separate C1 zoning and say, okay, I'm going to prove you for C1 zoning, but you're only allowed that? Is that legal? And can we deny a zoning based on what is being recommended for change or not? Okay. Can you turn your mic on?
Keep losing the mic. I think that there are a number, I was talking to Mr. Ruiz, about a number of different options here. I don't feel like what was portrayed today was exactly what I remember hearing at the P&amp;Z with regards to the site. The other issue is, I think the PUD may be a good option. I think also that, you know, there are some questions here that need to be resolved, and I don't think they have been resolved. I think the commission can send this back to the P&amp;Z, if that's what you would choose to do, and let them take another shot at it. At least two members of the P&amp;Z were uncomfortable, and I believe voted no, because they felt like they were voting for something, they didn't know what it was. And if that's a problem that we have with, with our codes, then we may have to look at. Of course, everybody's talked about the fact that we need to tighten up a number of our codes, and that still exists out there. By the same token, I think that this is the kind of situation where there's not enough clarity for the commission to make decisions. Under quasi-judicial, you all are supposed to listen to the case, and then look at what the information and the evidence presented to determine if there is compatibility, if there is a number of issues. And I don't think you've received any of that type of information.
So can I ask how this, how this is being presented to us, without the information being accurately presented to both us and the P&amp;Z?
I'm sorry?
So my question is, how are we being presented this now, without the information being totally vetted and presented?
You mean, why is it being presented?
Yeah, why are we being presented if this has not been done correctly?
I think that, all I can tell you is, at the P&amp;Z, the presentation was different in many regards than this one. I, you know, we don't know in advance exactly how the applicant may present, or what statements they're going to make. I mean, there's no way to know that until it actually occurs. So I would tell you that, to me, there's enough question and issue here, that if it is the will of the commission, I would send it back to the P&amp;Z, and we look at a couple issues. Because there is a definite issue here about what is this going to be? And is it compatible with the other uses on the property? I don't know that answer. I don't think any sufficient clarity was given to all of you to decide that. Now, you know, I guess that's how I would...
Was this being done in order to sell the parcel to somebody, based on it being a C1 zoning?
Well, obviously, there's, there was a desire to do a rezone to the most intensive zoning category that could be done, that for whatever possible use. The difficulty to me is, if you're going to say, well, we're going to get this used, and then we're just going to throw it out there and see, you know, like what takers we have, at this particular juncture, none of you are able to determine whether you've got a compatible use or not, because you don't know what it is.
And that's my question, and I guess my concern. We voted on a parcel last year, two years ago, that we demoed, I think, they, they demoed four homes on a corner block, and they gave us a beautiful song and dance of a Wawa going on the corner, and come to find out, it was only to put in for a rezoning, which is now vacant still. Well, you know, so I guess that's the best, the biggest concern I have is, I prefer honesty over putting in false information. You know, I think I would feel better about it if I was told upfront, we're changing this from zoning A to zoning B, so that we can market and make it more marketable in a commercial zoning area, rather than give false hosts of a fast-food restaurant and a business going in that people feel we have too many of. So with, are we able to make a motion at this point? Would you recommend we send it back to the P&amp;Z?
I don't know if everyone's finished responding to you. He's not done, so I will...
Just to, to address the first question, I believe it was Commissioner Burbank acts about the cross-access, there's already a stub out there from the Dunkin' Donuts that we plan on tying into, so that shouldn't be an issue. So for the future user of this property, which would be under C1 zoning, which would be whatever use that is allowed under your code for that, whether it be a barber shop, a restaurant, or some other commercial use, we don't have a user for it today. But the, the C1 zoning is, is basically what your future land use map calls for, for this property. And all we're asking is that the zoning be consistent with your future land use map at this time. When we come back, if we find a buyer for it, maybe it sits vacant for a few years, we have to have a user for it in order to develop it, and that development will be what it is under your C1 zoning, which will be consistent with your future land use map. We're not asking for, I don't think we're asking for anything out of the ordinary here, nor are we trying to be secretive or sneaky. Certainly, I'm not. I wasn't at P&amp;Z, all I can go by is what I was told. There was a presentation that there could be a fast-food restaurant there. Quite frankly, if we can sell it to a fast-food restaurant, I imagine the owner would sell it to a fast-food restaurant, and that's what would go there. And that would be consistent with your future land use map and your commercial zoning, C1 zoning for that property. But to sit here today and tell you, we know exactly what's going to go there, and show you a site plan of what's going to go there, market conditions are going to, going to determine that. Perhaps we sell it to an office building, which is going to be consistent with the C1 zoning there, and we, we have some kind of a office use there. But your zoning, C1, allows for certain uses, which will be consistent with your land use plan. All that's all we're asking is to zone this consistent with what the future land use plan is for the city of Deltona. The ultimate end-use of it, I mean, I don't say, I don't think it's irrelevant, and I understand the concerns about putting, putting something there that somebody doesn't like, but we don't know what's going to go there yet. Market conditions will decide what goes there. So to say that we have presented something without full information, well, we presented something to you that's consistent with your future land use map, C1 zoning, which would go there, I says, there is no other information that we could give you, we just, we don't have a user yet.
All right, before we go to Commissioner Jody Lee and Vice Mayor Bradford, I, I have a couple of questions. Was this property, and maybe somebody on the dais can help me refresh my mind, because I don't recall, and I wasn't on the dais, but was this property a C1 before it was what it is today? Mr. Reese?
R1, right?
My understanding is, this has always been a PB. Being that it, along Holland, typically what you have is commercial or transitional uses, kind of like what you see off of Saxon, along the commercial or the more intense corridors. So my understanding is that, as long as I remember or understand, it's been a PB.
So it's never been a C1, and then transferred to this, and then...
Not, not from what, not from my recollection, no.
And then changing then to a C1 would, would conform with the current land use codes?
Yeah, it is compatible with the future land use of commercial, just to clarify some of the comments and concerns that were presented a few minutes ago. So based on this application, what staff has is the data that's provided by the applicant. And if we deem that we have enough information to move it forward, then we do. And so in this case, what the applicant did, and just to kind of clarify staff's review and how it all went about, the applicant presented the drive-in bank, which is allowed under the PB zoning district, provided that as the most intense use, because it is based on the ITE trip generation manual. And then what they did is, in their comparison, so again, this is why we don't have a TIA yet, because it's all assumptions, which they will have to do a TIA upon site plan submittal. They provided a strip retail, which is, so the maximum intensity and FAR floor area ratio is 20,887 square feet, which would then produce the highest amount of PMP hour trips, which is 138, and 1,137 total daily trips. The fast-food was presented on a, on a, on a site plan concept. As, as I said, it was kind of the intent that was presented to staff, that that's what they're attempting to do, would then produce 103 PMP hour trips and 1,452 total daily trips. So what staff did was looked at those comparisons, made sure that the concurrency at the moment, based on what they're showing, meets concurrency, and so we have all presented this to you all.
So why are we not asking for that TNI, the TIA before coming to the commission?
So the applicant, staff did have a conversation with the applicant on the TIA. What they chose to do was this, the summary, or the assumption, per se, without doing a full traffic impact analysis, because at the moment, they don't have a set use, per se, or locked in, is what we were led to understand.
So, so this is the problem I have, and I, I don't want to sound like a sounding board, is without a TIA, we're presenting what could be a restaurant, a fast-food, let's call it what it is, right? And while I personally was given assurances it won't be a dollar store, that doesn't mean that a dollar store company can't buy it and create a dollar store, correct?
That's correct. Under the C1 zoning district, dollar stores is permitted.
What I am conflicted with, because I am not a fan of dollar stores, is that at the same time, they're trying to change it to something that does go with their land use codes. The problem I have is, I feel that the commission up here feels two things, right? And I know this is not a feeling thing, but we, we feel like we don't have all the, the possible information that we can get, right? We're missing, we're missing things. And I think that moving forward, if this commission is going to be at any point effective, efficient for the residents, right, is we need to have all that information upfront. We, we don't want a proposal of, this could be, this might be, you know, give us the lowest possible density, whatever it is, and, and the, the most, the most extensive one. Give us, give us options, don't just give us this, this notion that we're going to get something, and then we don't, right? I'm going to, I'm going to give it over to Commissioner Jody Lee, but I just, I feel like we're, I don't know if we're being led into believing something. It's their property, they have a right to build whatever they want, as long as it goes with whatever current code is in there. So they're coming back for permission to change it to something else, but we're losing a lot of assurances that we currently have, that we won't have with the C1, is that correct?
Correct. Under the PB1, they can, and talking, they've been asked the same question, single families allowed, banks are allowed, professional office-type uses are allowed currently under the PB1, that essentially they can develop that today under that.
And that's another issue I have, because I, I don't think we need to see more residential property, especially on Holland Boulevard. So Commissioner Jody Lee, then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor. So that's, that was one of the things I was talking about. See, if we zone it to the C1, then they can turn around and let's put a dollar store there. But now, if we rezonate to C1, and they want to put a dollar store there, and then we turn them down, then they have a right to sue us for not letting them use their property the way it's already zoned. Is that correct?
Sort of.
Sort of?
Yes.
But I mean, if we rezonate to C1, and they tell us, like here, I see restaurants show up, a fast-food, a few different places in there, I understand that you don't know exactly what it is. But if we turn around and rezonate, and then later on, they put a Dollar Tree there, and we tell, or they want to, they come to us and say, we want a Dollar Tree, and we tell them no, then you can, then you have a lawsuit, because we're not going to let you use the land for what it's zoned for.
Of course, the issue to me is compatibility. I mean, when you do a quasi-judicial and a rezone, you have a number of factors that you look at. And I think the key, the mayor raised the key issue, they're asking for something they currently don't have, that's what a rezone is.
Right, right.
So once you ask for something, then whatever you got, you're trying to get, there is a compatibility issue. And so to me, in this circumstance and others that we've had in the past, that's the real issue here. You, you have to make that call on whether or not you think a dollar store is consistent with the other uses there, or, you know, a guest house, or whatever it is. And that's where this is, this is about, once you ask for something, then you have to offer something. If you don't ask, like with this PB, they can go forward and basically develop whatever you can with what they currently have.
So that's, that's my issue. If we rezone, I mean, I don't really, I mean, can we rezone it, but say if you want to put anything other than like a restaurant, you have to come back and start over?
No.
Unless, unless, and I hate to interfere, because I know it's your time...
No, go ahead, say it, so I can...
But unless, and I, I personally sat down with the former city manager several times and requested that we put on the agenda a moratorium for storage facilities and dollar stores. And time and time again, he told me that this commission would not accept that, and that's why it's never been brought up.
I will.
Now, we can talk about that at a later time, we're going to have to deal with this right now.
My, my only issue...
We need to deal with this now.
Yeah, I, my, I mean, I don't, my only issue is, I mean, we have enough, you know, you say, probably you can make the argument, is our city compatible for another dollar store? Yeah, we have just almost as many dollar stores as we do.
Well, there's a dollar store five blocks or a couple of blocks away.
There's one, there's three, and it's, yeah. So I, I just have a big issue. If it's, if it's going to be a food place, I'm good with it. I mean, but I, I just, I just, I don't have a problem rezoning, but I don't need another dollar store, I don't need another, you know, Dollar Tree, Dollar General, McDonald's, Taco Bell, Burger King. That's just...
Commissioner, or sorry, Vice Mayor, you done Commissioner Jody? Vice Mayor Bradford, and then Commissioner Burbank.
Okay, so help me out, Joe. When I'm looking at this picture, okay, I'm going to take it back, being totally unbiased here, okay? All right, so we have front of Jaffa Holland, and then you have the Dunkin' Donuts adjacent to it, that you're saying you're going to do a shared drive. Is that an alley or no behind it? Right behind it, it's direct housing, correct?
Yeah, behind it is direct housing, and then there's an FPL or Duke, I forget which one it is, easement back there, and then you've got the property. one it is, easement back there, and then you've got the property.
And this is county or sewer?
Uh, this is, yeah, this is county utility service area.
Okay. So when I look at this, and I say, "Let's hypothetically dream your restaurant," okay, because that's what we were presented. So I'm going to do it as a hypothetically, as we were presented as a restaurant. I will throw concerns that I have. One, I have major frontage that would be off of a very busy Howland Boulevard. If I were to utilize the drive off of Rose Apple into the Dunkin' Donuts, then into this, I've got to look at restaurant. I have to have semi-access into this restaurant or behind the restaurant, because a lot of our locations do have alleys. This unfortunately does not have an alley. So where is a semi to come through and do a delivery, okay? I have to look at traffic. So that means I've got residential traffic mixing with commercial traffic at the same drive. I have to look at the egress and ingress. So looking at it in that way, I'm a little bit concerned on deliveries, in, out, traffic, with all that happening there. I think suitable use with this would be the PB, where you could have a bank, you could have an office building, but you don't have an alley behind it where we can receive deliveries. So that means you're going to have trucks in and out of that main drive right there on Howland, which looks like it has a divider in. I would want to see, obviously, turn leads put in. So I don't know how far they want to go on this. You know, to do what they're talking, I would need to see a lot more, just because I need to be cautious of the safety of the neighborhood, because we are backing up to residential behind you. So my biggest concern on this would be the residential homes behind you. Is that a residential beside, or you said that's a church, right?
That's a church here to the, to the west, and then to the east.
Okay. So I'm also going to be, restaurants generally, fast food 24/7, let's say. So I'm also going to have traffic in and out while I have church coming in and out. I don't know. To me, this is more of a traffic hazard, and I need to have a remedy to what the traffic headache would be, how deliveries would be received, and how we're going to intertwine. I mean, obviously Duncan's got a pretty big parking lot there, but they also have access off of the side road, Rose Apple. So now you're going to be adding truck traffic to Rose Apple into the Dunkin', into that, that restaurant.
I have listened to the concerns, and they're, they're really good concerns from each and every one of you. I would like to suggest that you allow us just to table this for tonight, and let us come back to staff and address the concerns, and let our engineers address those concerns, and let's bring it up again. I still don't have a user, but I think the concerns that you have with regards to traffic, how I'm going to get delivery trucks in and out of there regardless of the use, needs to be discussed more thoroughly with staff. It could be dealt with when, even under the C1 zoning, we've got to present a site plan. Staff's going to have to approve it. We're going to have to show that we can get trucks in and out of there. We're going to have to show we can get fire safety and other vehicles in and out of there. And if we can't, we're not going to get a site plan that's even going to be approved by staff. But hearing all of the concerns here tonight, I think it might be best if we just go back to staff and get all of the comments addressed, and then try again.
Thank you.
If that's acceptable to...
So, are you okay with it going back to the P&amp;Z board and addressing it via that direction?
If we have to start over and start with staff, then to P&amp;Z, then to come back here, as long as I get all of the concerns addressed by the next time I come up here and speak with you, and I'll be better prepared, then yes. I was not available at P&amp;Z. I was, I was kind of thrown into this at the last minute for my partner, Mr. Barfield. But it's, but given all the concerns I've heard here tonight, I think they're legitimate concerns, and that we could probably best address them with staff, and then go back to P&amp;Z, and then back to you. And then there, there won't be the misunderstandings about what's going to go there. I mean, who knows? Between now and then, maybe we do find a user, and we say, "This is what's going to go there."
Okay. So if it's okay, I have three other commissioners on the board. I'm going to go to people with standing, just in case there's somebody here, and then public participation, and then I'll let everyone finish addressing that's on the board, if that's okay with the commission.
Do we have anybody with standing? I don't think we had anybody with standing, did we?
Do, okay. So do we have any public comment? Okay, go ahead, please.
Kathy Bryan, please.
Hey, good evening, Kathy Bryan, Deltona. I think you guys have addressed most of the concerns I've had already. The other consideration, because I didn't go by that, I know exactly where it's at, and I don't know how you can assume so many trips a day until you know what you're going to put in there. My other concern, of course, is the high school being on the other side, and the constant cost, you know. So if it's an office building, it may be less traffic. It might be a whole lot less traffic. If it's something like a highly popular restaurant, it could be a whole lot more, plus that crossing. And I know it's going to be expensive, but eventually, the city's going to have to address a safer way for pedestrians to get across the street in that area, as we continue to put in, and you guys know that. So, thank you.
Richard Belik, please.
How did it get this far? This is insane. You're going back and forth, talk, talk, talk. It shouldn't even be up here. This is ridiculous. You got an attorney, she'd agree with a squirrel to get a nut. Come on. Just reject this. Get rid of it. Don't you, where's your own morals? I mean, come on. Ain't you's got no honor, no dignity for yourselves? You bring this before us like this? Get out of here. That's what you're supposed to do right now. Jody, you were right. Don't let her touch, she, it's crazy. They're going to, they're going to rezone this, and then they're going to say, "Well, oh, it's a restaurant." And then two weeks later, like you said, it might be a dollar store. I mean, and then you, and then she's telling you, "No, they can't sue." That's ridiculous. Come on. They own the property. They could, they could take you to court. Whether they win or not's another story. But this is ridiculous.
I did not say that.
For yous to sit up there and entertain this, and make these people sit and listen to this, that's ridiculous. Put your foot down on something for a change. No, this is what you're going to do to us? You're making a fool out of us. What do you want to have, a WGB board? Yous are looking ridiculous. Come on.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
Thank you. So at this time, I am looking for a motion and a second. And before we go to that motion and second, I do have Commissioner McCool, Commissioner Jody Lee, and Vice Mayor still on the board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, can I, excuse me, can I just, if you do want to continue this, we no longer, because of recent case law, we can't continue to a date certain. So we just would have to continue it to some date in the future, and when that date comes up, then it'll be advertised appropriately.
Okay. So then, we're just looking for a motion to send this back to P&amp;Z board.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner McCool.
I hereby make a motion to send back ordinance number 09-2023, amending the official zoning map to rezon 1.37 acre parcel of land located at 3150 Howland Boulevard from professional business to retail commercial at first hearing, to send back to planning and zoning. The city manager has the authority to make corrections of Scrivener's errors and the like.
Second. There's a motion by Commissioner McCool, and a second by Vice Mayor Bradford.
And Marsha, correct me if I'm wrong, they've got to state their reasoning for their vote, correct?
I don't think...
It's no longer, we're sending it back.
Can, can we also request to have, because that's a very small parcel. I know during zoning, we don't usually have to have a site plan, but that is an extremely small parcel, and we're already clustered at that Dunkin' Donuts, so I hate to say, I'm going to have to see a lot more on this parcel, like how you would get in and out and around.
And there was a concept plan that was submitted with the staff report and the application, but I'm sure the applicant will work to address any other concerns that did come up, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, City.
And Mr. Mayor, just a point of, just a point of matter, that the, please recognize that on our boards, it says that we are amending to rezon.
I know.
To send it back. Okay. Well, I just want to say it for the record.
So the motion passes 6 to 0 to send it back to the planning and zoning board and for staff. So, thank you. All right. At this time, we're going to go to Old Business, 7A, which is the request to accept the resignation of City Manager James V. Chisholm, city attorney.
Yes, Mayor. This is put on the agenda so the commission can officially, and it was available for the public to see the letter and the contract, and it is to officially accept his resignation. Nothing more.
All right. We have Commissioner Jody Lee.
I'd like to make a motion to accept it, but I want to accept it with the terms that his date of resignation goes along with the 30 days, so it doesn't get extended past the time.
No. I think we're going to have a hard, I think the consensus is going to be effective the day that he resigns. He's going to get his pay, but it should be effective the day he left.
That's fine. I get that it was effective, but I don't want to go, and I hope nobody's going to keep, no offense to him, I like, he was, there were some things he was doing very well, but I don't want people calling him, and all of a sudden, we get consultation fees and stuff like that.
I, you want me to, do you want to, do you want me to help you out with that?
Uh-uh, no.
Go ahead.
I can pass a gavel.
Go ahead.
You have your gavel. Let me see. This time, I'd like to make a motion. I move to accept City Manager James V. Chisholm's resignation effective the day that he left.
August 15th?
August 15th. Sorry, I don't have it here. This item is to formally accept City Manager James V. Chisholm's resignation letter dated August 15, 2023, with an effective date of 30 days from September 14. I want to make an amendment, so it's effective August 15, 2023. So we have a formal motion on the floor, and there's a second by, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
I asked to speak too.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? Yes, Vice Mayor. Alwood Bryan, please.
She has the floor until we're done.
You have a resignation letter that is really not a resignation letter. It says he's on admin leave. Can he actually put himself on administrative leave? That's one thing. Okay. Two, if you leave this as just a resignation, you have two managers, which is actually not legal under the state of Florida statutes. So, what you really need to do tonight is actually terminate him as of the date he left, and continue his pay through his 30 days as per his contract, so you're not violating his contract. Because to do otherwise, this man, if he fired anybody on staff, could be questioned whether he actually fired anybody. That's number two. Now, the other thing is, is as Jody Lee pointed out, if somebody on staff calls him and says, "Hey, you were in the middle of this, and you stopped because you left. I need your help," what's to say he couldn't charge you, the city, $10,000 for consulting, because that's what his contract says, because y'all voted to allow him to consult? That's like penis paving. When he handed over what streets needed to be paved, did he get a consulting fee for that? It all ties in. So, what you really and truly need to do is terminate him as of August 15, with his pay going through September 14, as per his contract. And that way, you're not violating his contract, but it also keeps you from being liable for any iffy stuff he might do. Because being terminated excludes him from being able to use a city vehicle, or anything else. Because as long as he's on administrative leave, he still has access to this building. So you have legal problems there. And for her to say anything different, she's not telling you the truth. At the end of the day, what you really, really need to do is completely cut ties from him. Because to do otherwise, you're opening yourself up to a big can of legal problems.
Do you have anybody else? David Sosa, please. And then after that will be Brandy White.
David Sosa. Yes, that's exactly what I was going to bring up. You know, he took his football and went home on August 15. Why would we start accepting it September 14? I'm glad you guys are stopping that. Because for every two weeks, he walks around with eight grand, so we would be paying him close to $32,000 to sit home. I totally agree that this should take effect August 15. I'm not sure about the termination or not. That's a legal issue. As far as interim city manager, city manager, it's my understanding, he was actually promoted to city manager. Glenn is an interim city manager, so I'm not sure how that works. Question, does he still have the city vehicle, and are we still paying insurance and gas in that for him? If that's something you could answer, I would definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I can answer that question if you would like me to.
The Vice Mayor is currently the chair until this topic is finished.
I'm sorry.
For our obituaries.
Acting City Manager, can you please answer that question?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commission, I have possession of the vehicle and the keys, and everything was turned in to the city manager's admin assistance, and I, and I took possession of everything on the morning after you all voted me as interim city manager.
And I believe at that time, he was also escorted out, correct? So everything was left at that point. He has not been back to the facility, correct?
Yes, ma'am. I wasn't over here, but yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Well, she's up here now. So do you have somebody else in line?
Brandy White. All right. I'm a little disappointed there's even a motion before any discussion was had. So I hope there's discussion had after public comment. First and foremost, the admin leave. Is anybody who's ever worked in the public sector knows, the only person that can put you on admin leave is your boss or HR, considering that position doesn't belong to HR. That's you guys. And you didn't put him on admin leave. He requested admin leave. You can deny that, and you should deny it. I don't see any reason to have him on admin In addition to that, he breached the contract. In no way would you guys ever be held liable, and I do contracts, would either of this city be liable if you deny his admin leave? He's breaching the contract by leaving. You didn't tell him to leave. So you need to address also the breach of contract. In addition, if you do decide to grant this admin leave, you have the responsibility to tell us how much we're paying him to sit home after he felt he did something that should require him to be put on admin leave, right? Because you're only put on admin leave if you did something, right? And you're being investigated or looked at. I mean, what else is the reason he's requesting to be on admin leave? I'd like that answer too. Because it sounds like he's just trying to bypass him breaching the contract he had. That's the only reason for a 30-day admin leave. Let's be realistic.
Timer, girl.
I don't think we should have to pay for that. I didn't see a timer, so...
Yeah, they don't have their timer. I'm sorry.
I guess I get to guess.
That's what I said. Richard Belik, please.
Okay. Let's, let's get to the bottom of the barrel here. All of this discrepancy. We got a city attorney. She got $40,000 paying one month. She doesn't know anything about contracts. She doesn't know anything about firing people. contracts, she doesn't know anything about firing people. She's been here for how many years?
Mr. Bell, are you addressing the item that we're discussing now?
Yeah, we're discussing Jim Chisholm leasing and contracts. What are you discussing?
I'm just trying to figure out.
You brought him here, shut up.
Sounds like you're attacking the.
Now, listen. He makes, she's supposed to know these things. She's an attorney. You've got residents coming up here and telling you. Come on. Why don't you give her the gavel, make a motion to fire her, and get an attorney? Look at this, look at this. Get out of here. Seriously, she's an attorney. She doesn't know any of this. Everybody sits there looking. Oh, I'm a bad guy for bringing this up, huh? She got $40,000 out of Deltona last month. Come on. She's been overbilling, yous all know it, yous are doing nothing. And now yous are sitting here, let me tell you something, I might look, look a little excitable, and maybe don't know everything I'm talking about, but yous are right behind me.
Thank you. Commissioner McColl.
Thank you. I was going to make the motion to terminate as of August 15. And if, and I want to be very succinct in my reasoning why. I'm troubled by the email that we got, and there is correlation, which I need to speak about, regarding Mr. Ruiz's resignation. And this is directly tied to Mr. Chisholm's resignation. And Mr. Ruiz is resigning because he was asked to do something that he felt violated his principles. And I know Mr. Ruiz to be a highly moral and principled man. He is good at his job, and was forced to make a decision between making a wrong decision and, and doing something wrong and resigning his position. And in order to keep his character intact, he said that he was going to leave, and I find that very, very sad, because Mr. Ruiz has been a great leader in the planning department, he has great vision, and I'm troubled by that. There was a request made from a developer for there to be a change made to a design or a development. And it was asked that Mr. Ruiz passed this through staff and not come back to the city commission, as it was sent as a minor adjustment. It wasn't. It was a major adjustment. So they were trying to circumnavigate this coming back through commission. And so I have a problem with that, and I have a problem with the way it was handled, and I also have other emails where the same developer tried to strong-arm our planning and zoning people, our planning people. And I understand that the same was asked of Mr. Paradise, and also the planning and development person prior to, to him also. So I have a problem with allowing a developer to dictate to our city manager what they are going to do or not do. I have a real problem with that. And so I am asking not only for us to terminate as of August 15 with no forward benefits or assignments for cause, and I would also like this matter further explored by someone that is legally up to doing this, because if there was wrongdoing, and we lost a valued member of our staff because of this, because of a developer bullying, or coming in and telling our city what they were going to do or not do, I want that matter looked at. So I ask that we accept, or we terminate as of August 15 with no moving forward benefits, is what I ask.
At this point, we have a motion on the table.
If I may, Vice Mayor, I'd like to ask our legal department, given the information that Commissioner McColl has brought up, that I feel, and I want to clarify that, because you're our legal team, the one that's supposed to protect us, I feel like there's enough in there for cause. Is that correct?
I, you know, you just can't answer that without knowing more about what happened. I also, I mean, Mr. Chisholm had a contract that was approved by this commission. It had a 30-day provision in it that either saw, either party could terminate. And I did not write that contract, but, so there was a 30-day notice either way. Mr. Chisholm wanted to resign immediately, and so, and he wanted to be in compliance with his contract. So the question then became, well, you know, there's a 30-day provision, and that's was, you know, why the contract turned out the way he did. It did. With regards to the commissioner's comments, with regard to Mr. Ruiz, I, you know, that's pretty inflammatory, and it's something that would have to be investigated, and also it would require Joe to be willing to make a statement to that effect also. And I don't mean in a public meeting at this point, that's not what I'm talking about, but it would have to be something that he would corroborate, and, you know, and, and put that information down. If such was the case, then that may well be cause, but it's just not a statement, and then, you know, we, we pass judgment and have public comment. It's not going to work that way. It doesn't work that way in a court of law. So that's, that's the best advice I could give you at this point.
Thank you. So, Madam Vice Chair, at this time, I want to rescind my motion and modify it. I move to terminate city manager James V. Chisholm effective August 15, and with an effective day of pay until August 15.
And, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a second on that one? I second it. So, okay, thank you. So we have a first by Mayor Villav, oh, no.
We have to do it.
I'm sorry. Mayor Vill, and a second, you did the first and second, so by Commissioner Dana McColl. I do have Commissioner Jody Lee on the board, if you'd like to be next, Ms. McColl.
I just got an easy one. I know I, I had this paper, but you said it's just, it's a very inflammatory comment. I have a letter from a developer that went to our planning. It's got the assistant that quit too and resigned and went home with his bag of chips, directing the planner to do this without coming back to us, per the city manager. So it's not an inflammatory thing. This is, it's in writing. It's the manager's notes on it. So this, what Commissioner McColl was saying is, is pretty, is pretty accurate.
Okay, Commissioner McColl.
And, and henceforth, therefore, is why I ask for this to be looked at. We need an outside, third-party legal, because I understand that, I understand the inner correlation. If we need an outside legal department to look at this, I want that done, because I also have another email directing the city manager at the time, that you will do this, and you will do this, and you will do that. And I'm, I'm not trying to get a new city manager to come on board until we have addressed reasons that they might leave, because public is, public information says that it's the commission that is interfering with the city manager. I mean, that's what the rumor mill says, but really not. These letters here will be turned over to the appropriate investigating people, for them to go back and look at this, to, to look at this. But I didn't just throw this out haphazardly. This has been a pattern in this town, and I'm sure if you get Chris Bowley back, I'm sure if you, whatever you need to do, but it needs to be thoroughly investigated, because this commission needs to do what's best for our residents, and there will be no bullying of commissioners and city managers like this, you know. So I'm asking for this to be looked at by an impartial party. So I just want to make that very succinct.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Can we please call the vote? And, um, did you guys kill my computer?
Yeah, it died.
Yeah. Okay.
Vote, vote, vote.
So it's dead, all right.
All righty. Commissioner Burbank? Commissioner Caldwell? Commissioner Jody Lee? Commissioner McColl? Vice Mayor Bradford?
Yes.
Mayor Vill.
Yes.
Five, one.
Motion passes five to one. I will be handing the gavel back over to the mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go to section 7B, appeal of the commission decision, RCM, May 22, 2023, to deny the request for approval to expend no more than $40,000 in state of Florida finance corporation chip funds for a disaster system project located at 1785 Tanner Court. Suzanne Kettle. Who will be presenting this? City manager?
Ms. Wallace will be addressing this.
Ms. Wallace, thank you.
Good evening. Phyllis Wallace, Public Works. I apologize, because this kind of got dropped on me. Tried to prep over the weekend.
I understand.
However, everything that I have read is that the original presentation to the commission for approval of this has some deficiencies that have since come to light, if you will. And there was an oversight as to the fact that the homeowners did not have insurance, which would have precluded them from making application and thus qualifying for this grant. And the applicant is seeking an appeal in front of the city commission, at which time the community development staff will present their recommendation of denial of this application based on the lack of required information and documents to proceed. And further goes on to state that the application was made under disaster recovery rules. These rules require the applicant to have homeowner's insurance. The applicant should have been rejected at that point for lack of insurance. Applicant requested a meeting instead of filing out an application. No evidence of homeowner's insurance had been offered at that meeting, and no other applications without homeowner's insurance were approved by the city of Deltona. Insurance coverage provides an inspector to determine or prescreen the nature and the amount of damage to a home caused by the hurricane of, in the fall of 2022 here in Deltona. And at that, I will turn it over to the resident to make his claim of appeal with you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city commission, staff, everyone that's here. An active guard came that is coming also, that's going to cause many damages, just like the one last year that did to us. We came out of COVID, depleted funds, we applied for FEMA, they came, there was damage with the AC units from lightning, the roof is messed up, everything is leaking. There's a lot of mold in the house right now. When we applied for the, when we applied for the grant through the program, that wasn't, this is the first time I'm hearing of this. We were, we were qualified, then we were brought here, and here we are. We're seeking aid to just fix the roof, forget about everything else, just the roof. I, I tried doing the solar, where they put on a roof, but my, my, my credit didn't make it. We're just in a place right now that we need aid. And I'm proud to be a Deltonian. I've been here for 10 years. Never been in any kind of problem with police department, fire anyone. I, I'm, we're in a place right now, we're seeking aid, we're asking for your help. And that's where we are.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jody Lee?
Yeah, I, I, there's a lot of this. I'm the one that made the motion to deny this the last time. I checked into it, I did some of my own investigating on this. From what I understand, the house is worth, I know it's supposed to be material, but it's, the house's approximate value is like $750,000. And you have no homeowner's insurance, and no mortgage, like, and no mortgage. So if you have a house that's worth $750,000, there's no mortgage, and you quit a job right before you applied, the job didn't get taken away, the place didn't close down, you quit and then applied. To me, and I said this before, and this is my opinion, there's a lot of people in this city having a lot, a lot of troubles, and this seems to be gaming the system. You need two air conditioners, not just one, you need two full-size air conditioners and a new roof. I'm sorry to say it, and I don't, I don't know about the credit for the solar panels that you just said, because where I'm, I know about the state of Florida, anybody can get solar panels, as long as you own your house, you can, they, they just do a loan, because I just got some, I'm getting some of my house now. But I've looked into a lot of it, I've heard some of the messages with you calling city staff, I've heard a lot of derogatory messages that you left. And from all appearance that I've seen, you, it appears, in my opinion, I'm not speaking for anybody else, it appears that somebody's gaming the system. And I'm sorry, there's a lot of people in need. When you have a $750,000 home, there's no mortgage owed on it, it's paid for free and clear, any bank in this world will give you some money to re, to fix your house. And that's just my opinion.
Mr. Lee, everybody that applied for this program is homeowners, sir. And everybody's home has been tripled in value, doubled in value, whatever that may be. And I didn't quit a job just before I applied for the loan. FEMA came and did an investigation and found all the damages. And instead of helping us with the repairs, they told us to go look a loan. We called this around to see where we could get help. They sent us to the city of Deltona, because that's where we paid our, our taxes, just like everybody else. We were qualified for the program, low income.
Thank you, sir. We're going to keep going with the commissioners. We're, we're not going to do a back and forth right now. So Commissioner Burbank?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, is there anybody living in that house that has a condition, a medical condition, for instance, that may require that the air conditioner be running at all times, or required that the roof, you know, just basic repairs?
I have asthma, and I receive disability. I have asthma.
Asthma?
Yes.
Are they being treated for the asthma?
Yes.
Are they on special equipment, special machinery?
I have a nebulizer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any public comment? Oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Bradford?
Here's, here's where we're at, though. Did you guys have insurance on your property when the damages occurred?
No, and we notified them that we didn't have any insurance.
So at this point, there is no, you, it disqualifies you guys, unfortunately, based on, that's one of the criteria, is that you have to have insurance on your property.
And they never told us that. And we brought in, it's months this has been going on, and they never told us that.
Well, part of the criteria, you know, you're doing an appeal, you're learning, and we can't go back and change it. You know, I understand that. You can't go back and, and change again insurance on your property now, but that is part of the criteria. You know, with that said, I don't have my wonderful thing here, but I do, I request that we deny the appeal of the commission decision at the regular commission meeting, May 22, 2023.
Second. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford to deny, and a second by Commissioner Jody Lee. Is there any public comment, clerk?
Sir.
Okay, can we please vote?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes to deny on a six-year vote. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to go into new business, request approval of resolution 2023 dash 44, and budget amendment to increase the, increase the refuse collection account to fund the remaining services for the fiscal year 2023 for a cost of $1 million. Mary.
The refuse collection fees, which are Waste Pro and also the tipping fees for Volusia County, they have been rising steadily, most significantly the last two years. The largest increase is attributed to the collection fees from the hauler. However, there are other costs that are associated with this expense. On June 19, Mr. Redman presented the results of his study on the breakdown of the costs, and they the results of his study on the breakdown of the costs, and they are attributed to the Consumer Price Index, which is, you know, part of the refuse collection and also the fuel costs, landfill costs. There is also a collection cost that we do pay to Volusia County, because they do collect as part of their tax bill. And there has also been an increase in the number of residential units. So all these costs have been increasing, however, the tax assessment has stayed the same since 2018. So this has just been a culmination since 2018, which is the year that we raised the assessment. It was $173 in 2017, $173.96. We raised it to 20280 in 2018. It hasn't increased since then. So this has just been a culmination over time. We're facing a budget shortfall, so we can, you know, we can't pay the rest of our invoices through the rest of this fiscal year. So what this budget amendment will do, will take money from the fund balance and move it to the refuse accounting line, so we can pay our bills for the rest of the year.
Just so the commission knows, we're having some issues with technology right now. So if you have, if you'd like to speak, I am going to ask that you put up your name tag or raise your hand, I guess, and I will mark you down. So Commissioner McCool?
Thank you. I want to understand, I have a memo from RCG Consulting dated August 14, and its memorandum of the solid waste rates and costs. And this is from Redman Group Consulting. I just want to say that. And did, did the public have access to this? Does any, can anyone answer that?
I think that the one that you received on August 14, but Redman's report, was on the June 19 meeting, which is attached to, you know, the grandicus legislator, and is available on the website.
Okay, because I just wanted to clarify, right?
The one that you received, he just distributed that to the commissioners. I think I received a copy of it, but I don't believe that's available to the public.
Because here's the thing, I would like to see the public be able to get this, whether it be posted on our website or whatever. Because looking at these fees, it, one way or another, we didn't pass the assessment, okay, which would have covered cost. So here we are, having to cover costs. So we're going to cover costs one way or the other. And I want to make sure that our residents have complete transparency on me saying yes to move this money, and that any, that we are available to answer questions, because we have some pretty smart people. So I'm going to turn this in. I know that you know what memorandum I'm getting, Mr. City Manager, if I could turn that into you, if we could get that posted, if it's not for this, because we have to pay for this. I understand where the, the cost, I understand where the costs are going. So I want the public to be able to get that, and that's all I'm asking for that. Thank you. Mary, and thank you so much. I know that I sat down and talked with you about this. Thank you for clarification on this. I appreciate it. And the public would understand also that you're there to answer them as well. You've always been very accommodating, so thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any public comment? And then we'll go to Commissioner Jody Lee.
Albert Bryan, please.
Let's see here. You know, have to wonder about this, because under your little attachment here, it says Exhibit A. Then it says what amendment is. Then it says fund. Then it says 102. Isn't 102 a restricted fund? What restricted fund are we taking this money out of? Excuse me? You're taking out of a restricted fund called solid waste and transferring it to solid waste. Now, remember, I'm under four minutes here. So, I mean, this whole thing kind of smells really kind of bad. It really does. And I don't have any hand against Mary and the way she runs her finances of the city, but when you're having a fund and it's restricted, it takes a vote from y'all to move that money. There's a reason for that. My question is, if we knew this money was going to be needed, why were we not told about it before the assessments? And what's this going to lead into next year? Why are we playing shell games with our money now? Because if she's saying this is coming out of a restricted fund for solid waste, why does it need your okay for that? Because it's still paying for solid waste, is it not? So by paying for solid waste, you're not, I don't, I don't get it. Something's not quite smelling right here. It doesn't pass the smell test. So at the end of the day, I hope y'all have many questions about why we're transferring money from one solid waste fund to another solid waste fund. The other thing is, like I say, when we're doing assessments, why was this not brought up that we had a shortfall for this year? I never heard anything about a shortfall for this year, 2022, 23. What we were told is we had a shortfall for 23, 24. So now, all of a sudden, we got a shortfall. Now, we had a, the other thing I kind of wonder about this is because in this year's budget that Mr. Chisholm did, we were going to transfer a million dollars from the general fund over, or from the solid waste fund to the general fund. And now we're asking for a million dollars for solid waste? How does all this add up? Something's not quite right. Y'all taking, figure this out.
Brandy White, please.
All right, Brandy White, Deltona. Mine's more for clarifications. So I want to try to follow the trail here. So just a few months ago, Chisholm asked to move a million dollars from solid waste to the general fund. Did that ever occur? If it did, is this that million dollars going back into the solid waste fund? Because it's just odd, it's the same exact amount, a million dollars. So I'm just, while we're floating this money around, I just, that's where my confusion is. Is this the same million, or is this a different million? And are we shopping yet? I know our contract's coming up. So if we could just get clarifications on, I tried opening. It wasn't on your end that was having issues. It was on my end. But I'm, I'm, it's only because it says a million. Like, it's, it's dead on the same amount that we just transferred before we came here for the assessment, saying we needed more money, which you have to see where I come from. If I'm, I'm a business person, I'm looking at these documents, I'm saying, you're asking me for more money, but you just transferred a million dollars out to make it look like we need the money. But now you're saying, no, we really did need the money in there. Then why were we transferring anything out to begin with? So there's just a lot of confusion. If you can set some of that straight. Thank you.
Close the public comments.
Thank you. We have, Vice Mayor Anita Bradford?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Mary, can you please come and answer and do a clarification for me, please? Thank you. Brandy White's question, it was for fiscal year 2024. That was a budget item, that Mr. Chisholm had proposed moving solid waste, a million dollars, to the general fund. That was Mr. Chisholm. I think we were all at this meeting when he said he wanted to move that money from solid waste to general fund. And I think he said in the event we had a hurricane. This is a shortfall that we're experiencing this year 2023.
Okay, so let me get this right. So the meeting Mr. Chisholm requested, so you're saying it's from the 23, 24?
It was a budget item, and that has been removed from the proposed budget to the final.
Okay.
It was an adjustment that has been made in the budget process.
So it is the same money being moved back?
No, because we're talking about two different fiscal years. This is, the one budget amendment is for the fiscal year we're currently in, and Mr. Chisholm had proposed doing that for fiscal year 2024 budget. It's two different actual for 2023, the year we're in. He had proposed that for 2024's budget. So it's two different fiscal years.
Okay, so I think where individuals get confused is, I don't know how to explain. I think what they're saying is, okay, so it's this, it's the same fund.
It is the same fund.
But it's just a different year.
Correct.
So I think they, the confusion is, well, why don't we just, it's all the same.
And for that.
Because you have to transfer it.
That's a good point, and let me just address that quickly, is that has been, the budget process is a long process. And that has been, that was in the proposed budget, the final budget, which will be brought to you on September 6. That item has been removed from the proposed, so it is no longer in the final budget proposed to you on September 6.
So we have to move it from one year into the next year in order to use it to come in for this?
It's not really, it's, the budget amendment is for 2023. There is a shortfall. We do have a fund balance.
Right.
And it was sort of, it was expenses that exceeded what was budgeted. So that's why we're moving it from fund balance, which is the special, it's the special revenue fund for that purpose. So it's, there's nothing, you know, untoward for using those funds for that specific purpose.
Mr. Mayor?
So yes, there is next year. Go ahead, Glenn.
I don't know the best way to explain it, so.
I was, I was just going to say, it's, it's to make up the shortfall we have this year, to get the bills paid for this year.
Correct.
And our next fiscal year starts October 1. So we had to get through, we already have bills hanging out there, and we have to get those paid and get to October the 1. So that's what this budget transfers.
Right. So in order to address your question, for next fiscal year 2024, in order to shore up that fund, we are actually proposing to you to move money from the general fund to support the special revenue fund because of the shortfall that's anticipated in 2024.
Thank you for clarifying that.
And I can't remember, I think it's 1.3 million. I, I'm, but, you know, that will be in the meeting that we're having with you next week, and it will also be in the final budget that's being proposed on September 6.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Jody Lee?
I just have another easy, if someone can help me with this one. If y'all did a budget, not, none of us were here. A lot of us weren't here last year. If the budget was done for this, and the money was put aside for this, because it was a budget item, how did we run a million dollars short? I mean, I, I understand we had hurricanes, but there was all kinds of extra money and emergency money and all kinds of other stuff that paid for all kinds of refuse. But if there's a contract, and we know what the contract is, how do we run a million dollar, I mean, we're not talking 150, 200,000. We're talking a million dollars on a trash contract that people signed that were here, because a lot of us weren't, but you're talking a million dollars short. That's not, it's not, you know, there's a couple thousand dollars. And we're talking a million dollars short. Who was in charge of doing, I mean, are the people that made this budget and put this money in there? I mean, are they still around so we can get direct answers to that specific person that made the budget for the trash?
I believe part of it was too, they sent a thing that said that the county raised the rates, and I'm not sure the exact date, but I thought, I thought what we received said it was partially from the county raising the rates for the tipping and the trash.
And that's, that's actually going to be effective October 1.
So that has nothing to do with it yet?
Well, let me, can I answer your question, Mr. Jody Lee?
Yes.
This contract was in 2018, and it expires at 2025. And you have to kind of remember the context when that contract was drawn up. And that contract has a couple exhibits or, the contract is tied to two different consumer price indexes. One is for the, the costs that people pay in the United States, that it's depending on what the Consumer Price Index is also tied to inflation and the cost of all people who pick up garbage across the United States. There's certain elements in the CPI that are for very, very specific industries. So one of them is garbage pickup, the CPI, and the second is for fuel. So whatever the CPI is in April, that is what the tipping, the, the rate will be for the next year's contract. So in 2018, what was inflation? Do you recall? About 2%?
Maybe 2.
2%, 2%, 3% for probably the first, you know, four or five years. So the rates have been pretty steady in the last couple of years, when inflation has driven up, not only just fuel costs, it's given up, the, the cost of the contract is tied to CPI that's driven the costs up, as well as the more homes that we're picking up. We've been having quite a few new homes since 2018.
Well, I, I agree.
So those are all the factors which, you know, the contract we have with Waste Pro is like 90 pages long. It's rather in-depth.
Right. Well, I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm sure you weren't going through to, I mean, a whole contract, and it was our other powers to be. But it's just, I understand there's more houses, but there's also the more houses, more houses paying taxes. So it's just, it kind of goes along.
That is true. But the thing is, the revenue has stayed flat.
But if we've had a contract, and they have violated this contract, I don't know how many times, you say, I think it was just the last meeting, we're talking, we get a couple thousand dollars back a month in violations from them. I mean, they've broken this contract 100 times already then, if that's the case. I mean, do you have any idea how much money we've got back from Waste Pro for violating the contract for different things? Just say this year? Not, no, just this year?
I can't say that, no, off the top of my head, but that, that information is readily available. I can get it for you.
Well, I'm just, if they have violated, but then I understand there's different parts of the contract.
Can I, can I?
I'm not trying to hammer her. I'm just trying, in general, trying to.
No, I understand, Commissioner. Can we just, can I just say that a lot of it has to do with the CPI, the Consumer Pricing Index, also fuel costs. The fuel costs have gone way up, even for our, us consumers, you know, the residents. So companies like Waste Pro and other, other businesses pass those on. Look at your power bill. You know, they pass on the fuel costs to us every, every month. I know everybody's fuel, or everybody's bills are going up. So it has to do with the economy and, you know, what, what they were allowed in the contract to be able to increase. So it's.
You, you, Mr. Manager, I, I totally agree. It's just, we're talking a million dollars for the rest of this year.
Right.
It's not, like I said, I mean, how much time is left of this year? We're talking a million dollars. I mean, that's, that's a big chunk.
So instead, excuse me, instead of going through this back and forth, I'm going to make a suggestion that somebody table this, so we can get full clarification, maybe individually, so we can understand this?
Well, unfortunately, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, if we, the problem is that we've, I've just been told that there's bills not being paid. We need to move this. That's the problem.
Yeah, I don't know that we can table it. I think that there are bills, and my understanding are that we have to pay, so we have to continue on, you know, with that.
I mean, I, I agree, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's our money. It's the city's money. It's the residents' money. It's our money. It's already in the bank. I'll make a motion to, to approve the Resolution 2023-44 and budget amendment to increase the refuse collection account to fund remaining balance, remaining services for the fiscal year 2023 for the cost of $1 million.
There's a motion by Commissioner Jody Lee and a second by Vice Mayor Bradford. So please have a verbal vote. Oh, is there any public comment? I apologize. We already did public comment.
You already had the public comment, Mayor.
Let's go ahead and do a verbal vote, please, and then we can take a five-minute.
Commissioner Burbank?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell? Commissioner Jody Lee?
Yes.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Yes.
Mayor Villa?
I'm going to vote now.
Five to one.
Motion. That is not right. Motion passes five to one. All right, we're going to go ahead and take a five-minute recess, if we can, please. To request approval of task authorization with, I'm gonna botch this name, Adura Group Inc. in the amount of $1,214,398.84 for the Teresa Basin Flood Control Study, RFQ number 23020. Ms. Phyllis Wallace, please.
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works. We are here to present to you the.
Phyllis, can you lower it, because I can't hear you. Sorry.
Better. Here to present to you a proposal and task authorization from Adura regarding the Teresa Basin Flood Control Study. We all remember about a year ago, Teresa Basin was the most impacted basin due to Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. And it was determined at that point that we needed to get somebody into the city who could evaluate the entire basin, both external impacts, as well as where do we discharge and try to get back control over our discharge. We did an RFQ. We had three, pardon me, three submittals, Adura, GeoSentec, and TetraTech. The committee included Glenn Whitcomb, Mr. Chisholm, Tom, Glenn, our city engineer, and myself. And that ranking came out with Adura being the highest qualified candidate. So we worked with Adura to put together a task authorization with a funding amount, and that has come to the $1,214,398.84. And we do have funding available for that in the Stormwater Fund. And I do want to just mention that although we currently do not have any outside resources associated with this, we are looking for a new program. There's a new Public Assistance Match requirement that Mary brought me up to speed on over the weekend, so we're going to drill down on that. And we do believe the end result of this study will qualify us for some, if not maybe a good portion of this, the cost of this study. With that, I have Adura here. They have a quick presentation if the mayor and the commission would like to see the presentation.
Do you have internet?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Ben Purnesny. I am Senior Project Manager and Stormwater Discipline Lead with the Adura Group. I'm joined here today by Mr. Ricardo Vieira, our Regional Director. And on behalf of our project team, we look forward to the opportunity and the privilege to work with the city to tackle the challenges of managing the water resources of the Teresa Basin. I have a brief presentation for you this evening. We'll have a little background about the issues that Teresa Basin is facing. We'll talk about how a watershed study of this type, how the workflow will go, how this project will unfold, major milestones. We'll talk about some of the methods that we propose to employ in the study, and then we'll talk about the schedule for completion. Teresa Basin comprises about 36 square miles, including most of the northern and eastern portions of the city of Deltona, the primary features of which is a cascading chain of lakes, running from Lake Colby in the north, eventually down to Lake Doyle at the southern end of the chain. Now, while this basin is considered part of the larger Middle St. John's River watershed, there is no natural positive outfall for this basin to the St. John's River. It is considered a closed basin. So Commissioner McCool, to use one of your examples from earlier, like your neighbors over in Osteen, which is in the Deep Creek Basin. If they get a major storm event, that's an open basin. That basin will drain slowly but steadily down to the St. John's River. That is not the case for the Teresa Basin. As you saw last year with Hurricanes Ian and Nicole, you get a major event and the water levels in these lakes is just going to rise, and then it's gonna stay there very stubbornly and persistently. Because the only way really for water to get out of the Teresa Basin, or at least whenever the emergency outfall system is not in use, is through very slow percolation into the groundwater or evaporation into the atmosphere. Now, the ineffective flood management strategy for the Teresa Basin that is acceptable to both the public and to regulators is a challenge that the city of Deltona has been wrestling with really since incorporation. And we're hoping that this study, the primary goal of this study is to provide the city with a planning tool that will enable you to get over the hump, to get past the goal line with a flood management strategy that is going to be found to be acceptable. So this whole process is gonna start with a quite comprehensive data collection effort. This basin has been previously studied before as part of the citywide stormwater master plans, the most recent of which was published in 2019, using data from around 2016. So the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna go in there and try to figure out everything that's been done within the Teresa Basin since about 2016. So we're gonna be tracking down lots of development data, so major developments, major capital improvements and the like, basically anything that could impact stormwater generation and conveyance within the basin. Particularly since this is a closed basin, we're also gonna spend a lot of time looking for as much lake level, rainfall, groundwater, water quality data as possible, because that's all gonna be critical then to building, again, an effective planning tool for the city. This will also be our first opportunity to meet with the public. The folks who live and work in the basin are gonna be the ones who have the best knowledge of what the issues are, where they're seeing flooding. You know, get there as much input as we can from the locals as to what we need to do to alleviate their flooding issues. We'll also be speaking with external stakeholders, Volusia County, the cities of Deland and Lake Helen, which occupy the northern part of the watershed, as well as the Water Management District, DEP, DOT, all the major players. So everyone is on board, and again, we can get as much information from them as possible on what's been going on in their portions of the watershed. Now, once all that is said and done, we are going to take all of that data, and we are gonna build some computer models and some representations of the Teresa watershed. Again, this had been done previously in some of the stormwater master plans that have been done for the city. What we're gonna end up doing is getting to a greater level of detail. So the first thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna refine the previous modeling, again, to incorporate what's been done and what's been built since 2016. One of the big efforts is gonna be to update the topographic data within the model to reflect the work that the state's Division of Emergency Management did in 2018 with brand-new, high-quality, high-resolution LiDAR data. And we're gonna add a lot, like I said, a lot more detail, a lot more resolution, get down to modeling smaller ponds, really get a good handle on how the stormwater systems of the Teresa Basin behave. Now, a method that we're gonna, that we're proposing to employ here is the use of long-term continuous simulation models. Now, most stormwater modeling, we do what's called design storm modeling. I assume you guys have all heard of the ubiquitous 100-year storm. What that is, is really, it's a statistical analysis of rainfall data for a particular area that gives us a particular volume that we expect to happen, have a 1% chance of happening in a given year. And it's a simplified method. It allows us to do more rapid analysis, and it can be effective for open basins. But for closed basins, again, where there's really nowhere for the water to go, except down into the groundwater or up into the atmosphere, which are a couple of inputs and outputs that normal design storm modeling does not take into account, there are limitations to that. So we plan to supplement then the design storm modeling with these continuous simulations, which explicitly model evaporation as well as losses to groundwater. We're gonna calibrate, validate the model then against real-world events. We're gonna model Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. We're gonna model Hurricane Irma. We're gonna go all the way back to the May 2009 subtropical event, which sat off the coast of Daytona there and dumped 30 inches of rain in five days. And we're gonna, again, get a good handle of how the systems within the Teresa Basin reacted to that, be able to validate then our model results against what was actually seen out there, and that's gonna provide what we feel is the best base then to propose a new operating strategy for flood management in the basin. So once we have our existing models built, we're gonna compare that data to available topo, and we're gonna identify, okay, what are the particularly flood-prone areas of the basin? Where do we need to focus our efforts then as we develop proposed capital improvements to address the flooding that they're seeing out there? Again, we know that the city's main desire out of this is to take the emergency overflow system, which was constructed back in 2003 between Lake Doyle and Lake Bethel, and be able to operate that on a more permanent basis. I'm not gonna sugarcoat things. That is gonna be a challenge. Again, this is something that the city has been wanting to do now for 20 years, and it has encountered a lot of resistance, in particular, from the residents of the Teresa Basin. The last time that the city tried to permanently alter that outfall system from Lake Doyle to Lake Bethel was back in 2018. A permit application was submitted to the Water Management District to permanently remove the brick-and-mortar plug that has to be installed in that system at all times, except under emergency conditions. And that application then was met with a flood of letters from residents in the Teresa Basin opposing that plan, raising some valid concerns. One of the letters specifically mentioned that they had experienced persistent low water levels in the Teresa Basin in the late aughts and throughout the mid, early to mid 2010s, following its operation from 2003 to 2005. And they attribute, you know, this letter, this concerned resident, again, concerned that a permitted operation of that outfall would result in permanently lower average water levels, which would affect their property values, would affect their lakefront. That's not an invalid concern. Sound lake level management is not an easy task, and it's gonna be uncommon upon us then to come up with a solution that we can demonstrate is gonna provide relief for the extreme events while having negligible impact then on the average conditions within the Teresa Chain of Lakes, within the basin. And again, we feel that that long-term modeling approach is what's going to give us the edge to be able to get us over the goal line on this. It's gonna help address those residents' concerns. We're gonna go back. We're gonna model that period where they had the persistent low levels. We're gonna go ahead and modify those simulations then to include some alternative strategies for those basin diversions to be able to demonstrate that if we had that in place back then, there would not have been a significant impact on the overall average performance, you know, the levels that they were seeing in those lakes. Furthermore, this approach is, I think, gonna be the way that we're gonna get the most regulatory acceptance. One thing that we need to, you need to know about sending more water down towards Lake Monroe is that Lake Monroe is covered under what's called a BMAP, a Basin Management Action Plan, under which there are statutorily enforceable goals to reduce overall pollutant loading to Lake Monroe and to the Middle St. John's River. And if we were to send additional water out of Teresa Basin down to Lake Monroe, that is a new pollutant load that is gonna have to be accounted for in the permitting process. So what our models will allow us to do is, again, we'll be able to simulate a multi-year period. We'll be able to come up with reasonable estimates in terms of how many times per year, in an average year, is this system gonna be used? Is it gonna need to be used in order to get rid of excess floodwaters? What's the total volume then that we're sending down to Lake Monroe every year? Based on some water quality data, then, we can extrapolate, okay, here's the pounds of nitrogen, here's the pounds of phosphorus that the city of Deltona would be adding into Lake Monroe. And from there, that gives us the targets then, and the city the targets, to identify water quality-related capital improvements that would be necessary to offset those additional pollutant loads to Lake Monroe. And it's all but certain that is gonna be the primary regulatory and permitting hurdle that the city will face then in terms of opening that, opening that outfall on a permanent basis. basis. One of the other things that will come out of these modeling efforts is the ability to update your flood maps. The current flood maps out there are effective 2017. It's a mix of AE zones, which have defined flood elevations, and quite a few areas that are just considered Zone A. This is an area that FEMA says is going to flood, but they don't know exactly how much. The model results that we'll be able to provide to you, you know, can help your planning department, they can use those numbers directly to help set what flood elevation should be for future development. Also, if the city desires, as part of optional services under this contract, we can develop the technical reports and documentation necessary to forward that on to FEMA to go through the process of formally revising the flood insurance rate maps that cover the city of Schedule for the project, we're expecting that this is going to take about 18 to 24 months to get through the entirety of this master plan. The first five months or so, again, looking at the data compilation effort, again, at which point we would have the first major public and stakeholder meeting. For about seven months after that then would be devoted to the development of those existing condition models, at which point we would propose to come back to the commission here to present an interim report on our findings, again, what we're seeing as far as the particular areas of heavy flooding that need to be focused on for CIP development. About a four-month process then for developing the alternatives, the capital improvements, the alternative operating strategy for any basin diversions, at which point we would have a second meeting then with the public. And this would give them the opportunity to take a first look at what we're proposing for capital improvements and get their feedback on that, as well as the ability to look at draft flood planes. And this is always a great validation exercise. We put up maps around a room, we have a resident come up and say, hey, that's my house. You say it's flooding. I've never seen my house flood and I've lived here for 30 years. That's fantastic information. We can take that back then and see if we can tweak our model in that particular area. Or the entire way around, hey, you say my yard's not flooding, but I've got standing water here all the time. So again, after we've gone through and done our initial analysis, that's a great way to truth-test it against the information that, again, the local residents and business owners would have. Finally, at the completion of the project around, again, somewhere between 18 and 24 months, we would compile this all into a final report, which would be presented to the commission for your acceptance. And from there, ideally have a full set of proposed capital improvements that could go into a future capital improvement plan for the city's future planning efforts. With that, thank you for your attention and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I have on the board Commissioner McCool, Vice Mayor Bradford, just so I'm clear, who else? Commissioner Jody Lee. And who else is wanting to speak? That's it. All right, I'm going to take a point of privilege really quick before I go to Commissioner McCool, because I have a couple of questions. And first and foremost, I want to apologize to our residents because this should have been done a long time ago, right? The report is only going to, this 24 months, you're saying, that's just for the report, correct?
That's correct.
Just, that's no action done or anything?
As far as any projects implemented, no.
Will you be talking to the commission as well individually, as well as the residents?
We absolutely can do that, yeah. You know, we would definitely, and having done quite a few of these public meetings now for similar basin studies, the attendance and the participation of the commissioners really makes a huge difference in my experience in terms of how effective those can be. So, you know, we'd be happy to speak with you both on an individual basis, as well as to invite you then to participate in those.
Because I personally have, obviously, I know that you haven't even started and you're here for an approval, but since you're asking us for some questions, I mean, I have some questions that hopefully the study can address. I know you talked about pollutants, right? I would like for, in that study, if we can make sure, I've seen numerous studies, as a matter of fact, I personally reached out to somebody who is currently being, who is University of Florida, if I'm not mistaken, is currently assisting them with grants to prove that you can clean water with hemp. It's a good example, right? As far as pollutants, as far as the drain or the overflow of the, what people use to maintain their grass, not running, sorry, I'm forgetting.
Fertilizers.
Fertilizer, there you go, sorry about that. We only have currently one outflow, which has been a nightmare for the city, which is the famous weir, right? I understand people want lakefront properties. I get it, it's property value, right? I don't know if necessarily completely removing it, but at least the city should be allowed to manage the lake levels that we have. I mean, I don't see how we can sit here and tell a bunch of residents that we're going to allow them to get flooded. We had over 100, and how many residents flooded this last hurricane?
We were estimating over 200.
So I just, we can't sit around and allow that to continue to happen, right? Something else that I'd love, because I've already spent months working on this, and I'm not going to keep beating a dead horse, but somebody that was here prior told me to give all the information that they would look into it and apparently it never happened. But I'd like for there to be something looked at, so we can put a bridge on LCAM. I know there's grants out there, because I've personally done the research, 93% of it can be paid for, specifically because during the last hurricane, it was over 30 days, we couldn't use that. Also, are we talking about possibly looking into reengineering all of our lakes so we can manage the outflow of our waters better?
Yes, so, yeah, that, all of those things will be, things that'll potentially be evaluated. You know, as far as the lake level management is concerned, again, you know, the individual connections between the lakes may be looked at, you know, if we find a situation where there's a big difference in elevation between one lake down to the next one, well, that might be, you know, a choke point there, a particular culvert or a bridge or something that's undersized, and so we could potentially look at that. Those are the kinds of things. I think the main approach on the alternatives that I'm intending to take is first we look at what can we send out? What can we feasibly send out under emergency conditions, you know, that is going to be, what we believe is going to be permissible? And again, what we believe will be acceptable to the residents who have heretofore raised objections and challenged permits. I think once we have that set, it'll be looking at, okay, once we have figured out what we can send out, then where are we still seeing problems? And then that's going to be, those are going to be the focus areas then for additional capital improvements, like say, a bridge at LCAM or, you know, other conveyance improvements between the lakes that we could, you know, feasibly look at to alleviate flooding.
All right. Also, we're going to be looking at another outflow, because right now we only have one. And I know we have a possibility of one, I believe it's Deep Creek, right, where the county can possibly step in and help out?
Yes, so I'm quite, I'm very familiar with that one, because actually I was on the county's side of the table back in 2009, when I was a very green young engineer, when the city was first proposing that pump station out of Lake Windsor into the ditch there and the Deep Creek side of the basin divide then. We'll tell you that the work that I had previously done on Deep Creek did show that a good portion of Deep Creek has a tendency to flood as well. So, any, again, the major challenges with any basin diversion, that's what the district likes, the Water Management District likes to call an inter-basin transfer. And it basically throws up every red flag in the book if you propose one. Again, on the Lake Monroe side, the big thing is going to be the water quality issues because Lake Monroe is impaired, it's got the BMAP, it has set goals for how much they need to reduce pollutant loading into Lake Monroe. But for either sending it towards Monroe or sending it to Deep Creek, in either case as well, then we'll have to demonstrate that we're not simply moving the problem downstream as far as flooding is concerned as well, and be able to demonstrate that we would not be exacerbating any other issues.
My last question before we go to Commissioner McCool, and I know that our population's extremely different, but maybe even looking at something like what our neighbors in DeBarry did with a big, I believe they called it a big ditch, correct? Is that what you called it?
Borough pit.
Oh, borough pit. Is that something that's also going to be considered in that study?
If we can find areas of significant, you know, areas that have not been developed, preferably areas that aren't already considered as wetland, and my initial review of the basin really hasn't, honestly, hasn't found a whole lot, but if there are areas that the city currently owns or potentially county-owned properties that can be done as a joint-use project, or, you know, same thing with DOT, or if there's the ability then to purchase, you know, undeveloped property and convert it into stormwater reservoirs and to storage and whatnot to help assist with that, that will certainly help.
Thank you, Commissioner McCool, and then Vice Mayor Bradford, then Jody Lee.
Thank you very much. I wanted to go over a couple of things. I've read your proposal and one of the most important things, I think, that you touched on here is the identifying data gaps, okay? And it's like we said, that when you're modeling maps and you ask residents to come up and, you know, drop a pin, as it were, I'm going to highly encourage that and ask that we move along. I know that there are GIS modeling and that's Geographic Information System for anyone out there that's not familiar with it and application, but I also know that there are resident-friendly, whether it's a plug-in or whatever, for GIS systems, which I think that would be amazing for our residents to be able to use, because there are pockets right now, when we're talking about collecting data, there are lots that have not been developed that are flooding. We have different elevations of homes in this city. We have, I know that on either side, at the intersection of Normandy Boulevard and Providence Boulevard there, where the Fresco Mas, all that is, you can walk on one side of the road, the east side of the road, and the water's perking. I have video, you look down and it's perking. You go to the other side of the road, it's not perking. Same area, but it's not, so I understand that. Is there the possibility within your data modeling and collecting for an interface with residents for GIS? Is there such a thing where our residents can go drop a pin in a problem area and be able to participate that way?
So, yes, as part of our initial public meetings, and we've done this in some recent, I've done this in some other recent projects, we've developed online maps that, you know, so for the folks who attend the meetings in person, actually, this was very much a COVID thing, because of the fact that we went to hybrid public meetings for projects that were going on during COVID. So we did have to provide some sort of opportunity for folks then who were not attending in person to be able to provide feedback. So as part of that, we developed online maps then that, yes, you know, a resident could go in, be able to stick a pin in a particular area and have a little form that was associated with that, that they could provide whatever feedback that they wanted to do. We plan on doing the same thing for this project.
And please understand that, because when we're talking about this, honest ground-truthing is going to come from our residents, right?
Absolutely.
When that happens. So I just want that to be understood, that that's my expectation of ground-truthing by our residents. I want that to happen as we go along, so there's that. Also, you brought up this also, land acquisition, right, as we move along, because I do know that we have, even on the agenda tonight, we have areas that are going to be not buildable, that we're going to find here. We have areas where there's naturally occurring water going on right now in pockets in our city, so. And I want to understand the, our BMAP ramifications right now for the city of Deltona. Could you touch on that for like a second, please?
So within the Lake Monroe BMAP, as well as, some of this area is also covered under the Silver, no, Blue Springs, excuse me, Spring Shed BMAP. In both cases, those documents have established target goals for each MS4 permyte, which the city of Deltona is one, that, you know, for their particular obligations to reduce their nitrogen and phosphorus loading by a certain amount. And I have not had the opportunity yet to discuss with city staff in terms of what they're doing as far as accounting is concerned, of the best management practices that are in place right now, both structural and non-structural, and what kind of credits they're claiming from that. But regardless, we will be, as part of this, evaluating what kind of best management practices are in place, what kind of pollutant load reduction is happening now, and look for opportunities within the basin and without, in particular, most likely we're going to have to look outside the basin for pollutant load offsets associated with the inter-basin transfer, you know, for modifying existing systems or finding available space to put in new best management practices to achieve those water quality credits.
Okay. Knowing that as part of your submitted plan also is your initial review of the ERPs, I want to make sure that it is understood that that is my request. I know that you said you may have to for data collection, but I want all of those permits gone through if you're doing this, because I believe there is a lot of truth laying around in some of those permits that were already issued on property that probably shouldn't have been built on. So if we're doing this, I want for us to go back and learn from our historical mistakes. So going through that permitting is going to be a big part of that, so I just want that, I just want that noted from my perspective right there. The HSG also, like, I will be very happy to have that updated, because as I said, you can walk on one side of the road and it's perking, and the other side, it's not. So there's that. And the data acquisition, I think that that's, could you tell us that after the completion of this study or during, at any point, will this have a positive impact on our insurance? Do you know, or traditionally regarding us taking these steps, right, in order to identify these, rectify and preventative, do you know of any benefits that this is going to hold as far as what our insurance rating or whatever goes?
So as part of your participation in the community rating system, you're generally expected to maintain an active stormwater management plan that's updated on a regular basis. And to the city's credit, that's already being done from a citywide standpoint. I'm not sure, Commissioner, off the top of my head, if there would be any additional benefit from having this detailed study from the CRS standpoint? But, you know, something, you know, that's kind of, again, one of the standard things that we tend to look at in the data collection phase, is we'll go through the city's current CRS and see if there's any opportunities to, you know, to improve the level, which then increases the discount to everyone in the city then on their flood insurance.
And I want this to be also stated, that as we move along, because we have exceptional, this is my last thing, because we have exceptional need here in Deltona, right, as far as our lakes, the chain of lakes, you know, that we have, I also want to make sure that we are advised with any emergency, not opportunity, but any emergency need for moratoriums as we figure out where we're going to flood and what we're doing, you know what I mean, in this area here, because, you know, we're, we are just really developed here in Deltona and I want to make sure moving forward that we don't, are not putting any future property owners in harm's way. So as we go along, I just want to make sure that that is brought to city staff also. My last thing is that there is going through the fee summary here. The only thing I have a real problem with is I would like to strike or whatever, the public meetings should be part of the process anyway, and I'm not comfortable with seeing a breakout of like $53,000 for that. You know, I think that for me, it should be part of the service that goes along with this. So I appreciate, while I appreciate the transparency, I just, I don't know, I think that it should be part of, you know, the process as we go along. So that's all I have to add. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bradford, and then Commissioner Jody Lee.
I was just going to make a motion unless, okay. I move to approve task authorization with Ardua Group, Inc. in the amount of $1,214,398.84 for the Teresa Basin Plank Control Study RFQ number 23020. The city manager has the authority to make corrections of scrip near errors and the like.
You have a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford. Is there a second? There's a second by Commissioner Burbank. All right, go ahead, Commissioner Jody Lee.
I mean, the motion's been made, and I can pretty much figure out where it's going. My only, I mean, that's a lot of money for a study. I understand all this stuff gets pricey. You ever think maybe we filled in a whole bunch of wetlands to build housing developments and might have caused an issue? Just, I mean, a place called Deltona Lakes might have something to do with it. I mean, I- I mean, I, I mean, we filled in everywhere you could put dirt in and people haven't gone and back and did compaction testing to check the density and the moisture in the ground and I know a little bit about stuff like that, but, I mean, we just keep doing it over and over and over and wonder why we flood. And you say you're going to go ask a neighbor if your yard's flooding. I mean, if that's what, no offense, but if our study is for one point something million dollars is asking a neighbor if their house flood lasts a hurricane, that's kind of crazy. I mean, for that much money, our study should be pretty precise. And the problem is, you say it's going to take two years to do it. Next week, there's going to be a storm. Tomorrow's going to be a storm. It might change. I mean, there's a lot of culverts underneath from connecting ponds here and there, lakes here and there. I can drive by and tell you it's not a big enough covert to go between the two lakes. I mean, that's, like I said, you guys, the engineers are professionals, but if I go by a covert and I can see it's half clogged up with mud and filled, I can pretty much tell you that needs to be replaced. I just, do we, now, after you come up with this study, if, if we want to give you the money to fix all these issues, do you guys take that price off the top? Because I can see after this one point something million dollars to fix it all, it's probably going to be another eight, nine million dollars to fix it all. Probably a lot more than that, but I'm just being, so I'm just wondering, do we get any kind of discount to take that off the top if we want to fix it later? I'm just, there's a lot of it, because I mean, I don't know how much time you've spent in Deltona, but the original name, of course, Deltona Lakes is, is a good hint. You know, if, if you live in place and it looks like there's a bunch of trees out there, like sand pines and, or sandy areas, I mean, there's a place where the road they had for sale for a while and since the last hurricane, it's been filled with water for the last couple of years. So I'm just, it's going to change. We're going to, we're going to have a storm tomorrow. Something that you think's dry tomorrow, well, might be wet Saturday. I mean, it just, we just keep building and building and building and throwing concrete down. I'm just wondering if we do all this and we choose to have you guys fix, help fix the problem, are you going to take that off the top of our bill? Just kind of curious. I can pretty much tell you're going to say no.
Uh, I, I'm, I'm not going to, to commit to anything that is above my pay grade. I, you know, I would imagine that, again, as you say, anything that comes out of this is going to be of, you know, a design effort of a large enough value that's going to have to go to, to independent bid, most likely. So that'll be, at that point, the opportunity then for, for multiple consultants to, to provide their feed, you know, any, any interested consultant to provide their feedback and how much it would cost for them to design that project.
There's, there's different areas of Volusia County that are, you know, a foot or so above sea level. I mean, you could dig out your yard a little bit and hit water.
I, back, again, back in, in 2000, after the 2000, big 2009 storms, I've had the opportunity to work on the, the East Volusia Regional Water Authority's whole study there of Nova Canal and Laurel Creek and Halifax Canal over there on the coast and, and yeah, you know, it's, it's in a bowl over there and, you know, what, what came out of that was several hundred million dollars worth of, you know, required conceptual improvements in order to, to get to a level where they could, you know, be able to keep, keep their roads dry for
Yeah, but when you said 2010, 2011, that was, I don't know, that was probably 20,000 houses ago compared to around here. So it's just going to, it's going to change dramatically. I mean,
And, and we, and we are going to fact, and we're going to factor that into, to our studies. As part of, part of what we're doing in, with these initial model developments is we're going to model what's out there currently. We're also going to develop a build-out condition model where we look at your zoning, we look at your future land use and we anticipate, and we modify our model parameters to account for that. That, right, areas that, like you said, areas that are right now that are sandy are going to be paved and impervious down the line. And that, that'll all be factored into, into what we're doing and that'll be factored into the particular simulations then that we use to develop proposed improvements.
Okay, one more final question. Now, if you're proposing to do this study around our city with the water, stormwater and where it's going to go and all this, you suggest we stop any big major housing projects till we get this study done? I'm just kind of curious because if we could put another place with another six, 700 houses, it might change. So would you propose as an engineer, would you propose that we stop any large developments from happening right now until the study's done?
All I would say is that I would propose that, that the city ensure that any new development that comes in follows all the proper water management district and city and county permitting requirements for stormwater management.
So you're running for political office now?
Thank you, let's
That's good.
Let's go to public comment, please.
Kathy Bryan, please.
I'm glad they're, they're doing a study and whatnot. My, my concerns are, for instance, we talked about the one, like the opening of the, we are, the big, we are opening is that when, when we look at all this stuff, we have to make sure that, you know, we want to protect our residents and those Teresa Basin residents, but we don't want to do it at the expense of other residents. And whether they're a proper part of the city or not, it's, it's not right to drain from one and flood the other. Talked about the being able to drain into Lake Monroe and the pollutants. Well, that's where we as a city can start laying down a little bit on the law on that. People don't have to have St. Augustine grass with all the fertilizer and pesticides to maintain it. I mean, we, if we don't start coming down as a city, there's, there's, there are certain things. It's not anymore like a luxury to have that, it's, it's a necessity to not have it. So there's things I think in the, you know, look going forward, because we never did get to look at our comprehensive plan, we never ha, I haven't heard any more about the land planning, but there's a lot of things that can be done to help control these things. Using the, using empty lots that may no longer be buildable was one of the suggestions recommended by the Transform 386 Committee where they're giving the grant funds to different cities. So that might be an option to look at some of those to help with mitigating some stormwater in the meantime. And, you know, unfortunately, the history, the previous commissions have approved so many developments that they might, they might fit certain plans, but they weren't right, the right thing to do. So I'm hoping going forward, we can start doing more of the right thing. Thank you.
May that close the public comments.
All right, can I please go for a verbo vote?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but also with this agenda item is a budget transfer of the 1.2 million to fund this project from general fund. Just, just want everybody to be aware of that. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Burbank?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
No.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
No.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Yes.
Mayor Vila?
Yes.
4-2.
Motion passes 4 to 2. Right, at this time, we're going to get comments on consent agenda items. Are we supposed to call for an extension of time? It's 9:30, almost.
All right, Brady White, Deltona, mine is on 10A. Got a few questions I'd like you guys to discuss and get some answers before voting on that one. First of all, who approves the permits for construction here in Deltona? What exactly is that process? Because there's a lot of confusion on that. Also, why is the St. John's River Water Management District permitting mitigation of properties in our area and can you explain the process for that? Now, let's talk about the specific property. Not that I have a problem with purchasing it, but if you're going to pay 51K for this useless piece of land for anybody else other than you, plus reimburse them $6,000 in their own dumbass expenses, then I think we should have some drug testing because that is the most insane thing I've ever heard. They purchased it for 10 grand. Why are you saying we will pay five times that to take it off their hands because it's useless for them? Now, mind you, I did a little bit of research. The person who purchased this in 2021 is a board certified real estate attorney. You're going to tell me they didn't know what they purchased? But they want to make five times off of our asses, right? They want us to give them five times what they paid for it. I don't think so. We'll pay 10 grand, we'll pay what they paid. They have to eat their expenses for not doing their due diligence, but let's be realistic, they did their due diligence. Or the first thing they did after purchasing it wouldn't have been come to this city and ask you to buy it, only for it to be denied for a few years. Now somehow, they get a new permit to build just in June of this year, after builders have walked away for saying it's wetlands, after St. John's had muck removed, excavated, disposed of and replaced with construction compacted material, after the city as far back as 2019 has said this land is not buildable. But this real estate attorney, you're going to tell me, should get five times what they paid for it on our backs because we pay for it. 10 grand, no extra expenses, bottom line, or we got some problems.
Mayor, that closes public comments.
The consent agenda item contains, sorry, the consent agenda contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. Discussion is desired by any member of the city commission. Item must be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. All other matters included under the consent agenda will be approved by one motion. Citizens with concerns should address those concerns by filling out public records, which has been done. I see Vice Mayor Bradford is on and then Commissioner McCool.
Oh, we got to do this?
And
I hate to say this, but that was my exact same question. Why are we spending so much money on a very useless property? Where did the price come from? Obviously, they had to do their due diligence and part of their responsibility would have been verifying that the lot is buildable, it's not wetlands. And I'm not quite sure, I mean, I get we want to take it off of there. I, I don't, no, I don't get it. I don't. If I buy a property and it's not usable, then we got a problem. We start doing this, we are not real estate agents. I mean, I have a parcel right next to my office that is purchased and the owner afterward discovers it's not big enough, I can't do this. That's part of your responsibility as a buyer. And unless there's gold on that property, I need to know why are we spending $56,000? That's my question and I don't know who's got the answers to this.
Hold on, I think
I mean, if the property was purchased, like she's saying, why would we give them so much more money? I mean, anything to them would be like, get out of it, but not make a profit.
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works.
Thanks, Phyllis.
Mayor and Commissioners. Ms. Brandy White did have a good amount of historical information regarding this. As far back as I remember, LGI purchased the property. They pulled a permit, they had a legal permit in which to build. Things went sideways, whatever we want to call them, they walked away from the lot. They walked away from a number of lots in Deltona, not just this one. The lot went back on the market and it was sold for $10,000. At that time, there was an opportunity for the city to purchase it for a little bit more than 10,000 and not at the current rate. And that went sideways with administration that's no longer here at the city of Deltona. Builder got a permit, has a legal permit to build and has been going forward with the process of, you know, doing work to build that, build on that lot. The purchase price that staff worked with the builder, the, the property owner was to have him recoup all of his money that he has invested to date for the lot. And that then the property would be owned by the city. There would be no opportunity for building on it for anything other than passive uses such as maybe a park or possibly down the road with all the stormwater improvements that we're doing throughout the city. We may be able to use it for that or for, if we extend sanitary sewer into that area, we have a property in which we could put a lift station on. I can tell you
How much do they have in the property?
They have that $54,000 into the property and the
The builder does?
The builder does, yes, yes, yes.
But the builder can't do anything with that property at this point?
Um, I'm not going to say that because I'm not an engineer, but he has a permit to build and he can proceed trying to build that property. Yes, ma'am. The city of Deltona issued him a building permit.
And I, I guess my curiosity is how in the world did the city of Deltona issue the building permit? Don't they have to, when you submit that, that permit, so was it submitted without accurate information? Was it submitted with, that it was in a flood zone? Was it, I mean, that's my question. There's a lot more, I can't just go submit a permit and then, oh, you know what, there's a problem with the parcel and then expect the city to buy it back. We start doing this, we're taking dual diligent responsibility away from individuals. And if I, if I was as a business owner, I'm going to try to put myself on that side. I go, I purchase a property, parcel, I'm going to find out why didn't this builder go through, what happened here? When I submit that permit, I have to designate whether or not that property as part of my building plans, is it in a wet, is, is it in a wetlands? Is it, so I don't understand how it got through and I guess we're doing this because that was our mess up? Is, so is that what we're saying is we're going to do this because we let something go through that we shouldn't have let go through?
I can't speak as it relates to the building permit side. That's not my side of the house. I don't work in the building department, unfortunately. I can tell you when LGI walked away from the property in all transparency, this current property owner reached out to me, or potential buyer, and I encouraged him to do a public records request on this property specifically through the building department to pull everything associated with it so they would know, hopefully going into it, what they were possibly inheriting.
Ms. White, can you please, I know you're frustrated, but please allow her to speak.
I can't make a builder do that. I can only encourage somebody with information that I'm aware of. Somebody walks away from a lot, there's a reason why.
And, and that's my problem. You just said it. You encourage them to do their dual diligence. If we start buying back every lot that somebody said, oops, we ain't going to have the money for it. That's just my personal opinion. I mean, I feel bad if, if our city manager was going to say, wow, this is a parcel, we can put this retention pond on and we can do this and we can do that, great. But at this point, I mean, we're not a bailout. I'm not, I'm not a bank and we're not here to bail it out. And if we start doing this, we're setting a precedent that you don't have to do your due diligence and even if you do and you screw up, don't worry about it. The city's got cash in their back pocket. I mean, we just turned down helping a family because they didn't have insurance. Why? Because they should have had insurance on it. They knew better. They should have known better. But now we're saying on the flip side, oh, it's okay. We've got to be consistent here. So that's, that's all I have.
Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Jody Lee.
Thank you very much. So I want to address this property right here. I've watched this property. This property is in my district. Not only is it in my district, it's in my neighborhood across from retention pond that, and this property between Picasso and Abbey Terrace, there is a whole tree line that there is some naturally occurring groundwater. And I will tell you that I have raised cane about this since 2018. I have watched the developers come in here and try to, to buy this property and build on it. And I have been insistent because the first time they cleared this property to build the first time, the stink in the neighborhood was there for a month and they tried to demuck this property and you can't demuck this property because this property has naturally occurring water flowing under it, period. The
The neighborhood on Picasso behind here, if you look at the tree line, it goes for two city blocks. And there's a tree line with naturally occurring running water or groundwater where when they were digging, I've watched water run off of this and sheet off of this property for, since 2019. And so when I saw flags up again that somebody was going to try to build on this, now, mind you, on Picasso behind this property, there are homes that were, that were built back there on the same unstable ground that have, that has flooding permanently on their property. They have settling on brand new houses, right? And that is an area, that is a flooded area. It's constant. When we did away with the, with the stormwater assessment, the project that was going to go on back there in that neighborhood, which has been on a priority list since before I was elected, so I'm going to put that out there for public consumption. This area has been up since before I was elected. It is my job to make sure that my residents are taken care of. I've called the department, the city manager's office several times screaming about developers being able to develop on this property and somebody's going to walk into this situation unaware that this property is mucked like this. So I put this in the capable hands and said, there is no way that they, I'm not going to let them build on this property. Well, this property is situated in an area that can also hold a retention pond to bring some of the flooding off of that two to three square blocks area. And that's what I was told. But I've been very insistent about the city, or I have asked about the guidelines and the city buying this property because it's not buildable. So it's not, I don't think, I don't think that reoccurring, or I think that the reoccurring theme here is that this property is needed in order to, to do a stormwater project back there in that area. I don't know what's going to happen now because we did not do the assessment, so I don't know where the projects are since then. And again, I know that over the last, there's been at least four developers to try to go in here on this property and build on this property and, and you can't. I know that the city can use it, but you can't build on this property. So wherever this lands with the will of the commission, that's fine, but in complete transparency, I've been screaming about this property now to go into land trust or to be purchased to keep, number one, another developer from buying it, number two, be having that land acquisition available for stormware, stormwater mitigation. So whatever the will of, but I am telling you that if you feel free to drive by that property there and I want, I mean, it's just, it's already, there's aquatic plants popping back up on this property and it's been cleared several times. So it needs to be looked at no matter what. It's unbuildable. I don't know by which mechanism that we can trigger that not being built on, but that needs to be explored also. So whatever the will of the commission is.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jody Lee, and then Vice Mayor Bradford.
Well, for all the reasons, it's all, what all y'all said. But the other thing is, why, we don't need to build. Just let it mother nature take over. Leave it alone. We're just talking about saving money, not having money, moving money around. Let's buy another piece of property that's worth 2 grand and we'll give them 50 grand for it. We're trying to save money.
Mr. Mayor, if I may again, sorry to interrupt. One of the things that we're looking at is we're looking at a area, that area is, falls in federal grant monies area, Justice Forty.
Justice Forty?
Yes, sir. And one of the things that we looked at with this piece of property was we could possibly put a stormwater pump station on that property. I don't know that it's big enough to put a, a big pond or anything, but we could. Also, you know, there's, there's the thought with the Justice Forty money, there's also septic or sewer. You know, we had the floods in different areas of, of the city, especially in that area where Commissioner McCool is talking about, not necessarily that type of flooding, but if you go by there at this point, you see groundwater, you know, and it takes quite a while for it to dry up. So that was one of the thoughts that we had a few weeks ago when we met out there. That was one of the things that we had, had put into consideration was having that property. So if we do go get the Justice Forty grants and we do start construction of stormwater or, and/or sewer in that area, you know, we would have a place to put a lift station as Ms. Wallace had, had indicated earlier, or possibly a pump station for stormwater.
Got to go back and finish? Okay. So that means, if it comes down to this, that means all the people that live on the side of a lake that got flooded, we should buy all their houses too.
Guys.
But, I mean, this is almost as idiotic as the house that we paid 850,000 for by the wastewater treatment when it was only worth 200,000 and we paid 850. This is just another dumb idea with our tax money. If it's something that can go with a grant, good, get the grant money when we get the money, then buy it. But not our, it's, it's just, we're wasting, we're talking about all this stuff and all these different projects and all this money we need to move around, all this other stuff, but we're going to keep buying land that we can't do nothing with. And I'd like to really find out how they got a building permit. I mean, that should be looked into first because if we're issuing building permits for a piece of property that we know is no good, somebody needs to be held accountable. Just throwing that out there. And if, Commissioner McCool, if you've known this is bad for a long time, you see it, you know as well as I, if you know there's water coming in there, they, they shouldn't be getting building permits. This is stuff that should be looked into.
Don't, don't attack the commissioner.
But, so, I, I understand I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to attack nobody, but 50 grand for a piece of property, it ain't worth it.
So guys, we're, we're kind of circling around this. Somebody can simply make a motion to approve.
Can I ask legal questions?
Yeah, go, go ahead. I'm just saying, before Vice Mayor gets on there, we can literally do a motion to approve B through E and take this one out, just saying that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Legal opinion on this?
Oh, I'm done.
If we've already been turned down, let's say the permits already been issued, are we legally allowed to go back and say based on, like, I don't know if the permit states whether it was in a wetlands or a muck, because I'm pretty sure like when I do plans, I'm required to put on there the soil level and what the soil tests are. So that's kind of why I'm sitting here going, so, they had to know, right? You know, I get us possibly being able to use it for a lift station and that, but then I still have concerns. We're going in a muck area, you're going into wet area. Are we going to want a sub-pump in a possible flooding area, muck zone? Is it the best place? No. Is it a solution to help out? Possibly, but I would rather use our, our grants for something that's more worth it. And what I'd like to know is what legality do we have at this point since a permit's been issued? I mean, based on, they should have had detailed permits and plans that actually state what the soil is. And if the soil's not what they stated is, because I know building would not approve a permit based on a muck property. And then if it is, how do we deem that property once we get through that point?
Vice Mayor.
Unbuildable.
We'd have to look, find this permit, look and see what happened, how did it happen? And if there were circumstances where it shouldn't have been issued, we could, you know, we can pull it. I mean, that's the only thing I can tell you because I don't know the specifics of it.
So at that point, I would rather see us, instead of just throwing money out right away, say, listen, how did we get here? One, how did we get here and how did we not get here again? Because like I said, building permits are made to protect this from happening as well. And we have some pretty smart officials. And for them to get this through, that tells me, was the information submitted on the permit correct?
Well, we can, we can look into it.
So rather than throwing money out, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered first and foremost. Because obviously if it's not suitable to even put a foundation on and to do that, I'd be concerned of having a lift station, a pump sump in, in any area like this as well. You know, so.
Okay.
You know, I prefer that, I don't know what, how you want me to make the motion. I mean, obviously I'd rather have the motion that we are, let staff do more review on this parcel, but in the meantime, I don't, I don't think anything should be built on it.
Well, that's, I mean, all we, if you want to give it that kind of direction, then we'll try and move on it as quickly as we can.
Well, because I want to be sure that this parcel is at that point deemed unbuildable.
I don't think in the time it will take us to find out anybody's going to run in there and try and buy it. So all I'm saying is we'll try and find out, you know, whatever detail we can get on this billing permit.
So you just want me to make a motion to deny?
I would say.
Or to have you leaked, have you reviewed it?
I would say let's just pull it.
Okay.
At the will of the commission, let's just pull it and we'll do some research and we'll bring it back at another time if deemed necessary.
Okay, so I make a motion to pull.
We're going to have to, I'm sorry to interrupt you, we're going to have to pull A and C because there needs to be a correction to C.
10C. I want to pull items A and C.
There's a motion to pull items A and C from the consent agenda.
Until further notice and review.
I want to discuss.
There's a second by Commissioner Burbank.
It's hard because I don't have my, I feel lost up here.
So we're going to do, we're going to do, go ahead, Joyce.
Go ahead, Joyce. What do I need to say?
We get 10A and 10C until further notice and review. 10C, you don't want to be further noticed and reviewed though.
No, that, that can be.
Okay, so.
Notice and review and 10C for discussion.
My white paper here is not telling me. Okay, so I'm going to pull item 10, I'd like to make a motion to pull item 10A until it is further reviewed by staff and legal.
Second.
There's a motion by Vice.
Who made the first, second? So Burbank has to change my motion. Do you approve the change of my motion? Thank you. Okay, sorry.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor and a second by Commissioner McCool.
What?
Can we please vote?
We're still leaving everything else in there?
No, no, we're voting on this one consent agenda item.
We're pulling this one item and sending it back.
Go ahead, Joyce.
Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Caldwell.
Commissioners, if your mics can please be on when you're voting because it's really difficult to hear. Go ahead, I apologize.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes.
Commissioner Bradford.
Yes.
Mayor Villa.
Yes.
6-0.
I make a motion to pull item 8C.
It's a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford to pull item 8C. 10C.
10C, sorry.
There's a second by Commissioner Caldwell.
Sorry, guys, we have no computers up here, so we're a little blind.
Ready for me?
We're ready for you.
So are you looking at going ahead and approving the other items that you haven't pulled then?
We're just going to pull it for discussion while we vote on the other items to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Liz.
Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Caldwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Yes.
Mayor Villa.
Yes.
6-0.
Okay, now, now we're looking for a motion to approve consent agenda items B through E excluding A and C. If that makes sense.
Second.
Hold up. You want to approve items B, D, and E?
Correct. Excluding A and C. Whichever way the motion's easier, whoever wants to make the motion.
I make a motion to approve items B, D, and E.
It's a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford. There's a second by Commissioner Caldwell.
Commissioner Burbank. Commissioner Caldwell. Commissioner Jody Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bradford.
Yes.
Mayor Villa.
Yes.
6-0.
This time we're going to bring up section 10C, which is request to award the bid for the fire station, painting to 512 Painting Remodeling LLC. The reason we pulled that is because we were notified today by Kate that the lowest bidder, 512 Painting backed out. The lowest bidder per the bid packet is HRE General Contracting. However, they did not quote for all locations as requested, making Bach Painting Inc. the lowest bidder. The total cost increase increases from 28,247 to 52,000. Chief Snyder.
Any painters in the audience?
Yeah, so it did go out to bid. We had five different companies bid on it. Most of them were around that $50,000 range with this one company that was, came in at 28,000. I'm not sure if that's why they pulled their bid, because they possibly underbid it. I don't know. It's just a guess. But we are requesting that we go with the next lowest bidder, which is actually the third lowest bidder because the second lowest bidder didn't bid on one of the projects. We are in the process over the last couple of years and moving forward to next year, renovating most of our stations. They are some of the oldest buildings in, in the city. And we're trying to spruce them up with some paint and things like that. So this project would allow us to paint the inside of the bay area for.
I'm sorry, Chief Snyder, guys, we, we're trying to hear, please.
This would allow us to paint, paint the inside of the bay area of our stations and then paint the outside of our logistics building. So that's what we're requesting.
Thank you. Commissioner Jody Lee, then Commissioner McCool.
Thank you, Chief. I, I understand these fire stations need to be, I'm not going to pick on you. I know they need to be painted. I think we should reach out to the Land Courthouse and find all these people that are in trouble and need to do community service. We're still talking about saving money. I think we've got plenty of prisoners around that need to do some work. I think there's enough people in this city that will help and do stuff. We can spend a few thousand dollars on paint. And I know somebody's going to answer me and say it's a bad idea, but there's a lot of people in our city that like to spend time in the Land Courthouse and they have community service hours. So I think there's plenty of people we can get to paint them. Community service hours would be nonprofit. I mean, the, I, come on, we're still talking about saving money. There's ways to do it. There's ways to do it. There's people that are, I mean, there's people in trouble. You see prisoners out there mowing grass and stuff. Let's get, let's find another way to do it. I know everybody's going to give me help for it. Go ahead. Go ahead, I'll quit.
Commissioner McDonough McCool.
I'm out.
Okay. Vice Mayor Bradford.
Okay, I'm just going to throw this out there. Not everybody can paint and our firehouses are going to look like horrible. Like, when I tell you some people can't paint, some people can't paint. Like, there's, I have people that I don't even let them touch a paintbrush, okay? So I would recommend we let the pros do what they're doing. They sent it out to bid, they did it the correct way, which I greatly approve. I did wonder how that bid came in as low as it came in based on, you know, the other fire station's bids. And this is not for one fire station, individuals, this is for several fire stations. We've got interior, exterior going on too, and I believe another bay going in. So I move to award the bid for fire station, painting to, and I really am sorry if I messed it up, Bach, Bach Painting?
Ink.
Painting ink to 52,000 and to keep Jody Lee away from the paintbrush.
There's a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCool. Can we please go for a vote? Give me one minute, Liz. I apologize. Commissioner Burbank had his name tagged up and I apologize, I didn't see you.
He's so quiet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to address Mr. Jody Lee's excellent idea. I do really appreciate free childhood labor. I would use community service hours as much as I could, but one of the, one of these volunteers or one of these prisoners falls off a ladder without liability insurance, you're not saving any money, Jody Lee. That's what I got. Thank you, man.
Thank you. Can we please go for a vote before we say any more comments?
Commissioner Burbank?
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Jody Lee?
Do it.
No, I want to, but at the same time, don't forget.
It's yes or no, Commissioner Jody Lee.
Right, don't forget this was on the regular agenda.
Yes or no?
Some consent.
Yes or no? It's a vote, yes or no?
Some consent.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bradford?
Absolutely.
Mayor Villa?
Yes.
6-0.
Thank you. All right. This time we're gonna go to special, city commission special reports and requests. And, we're going to, I'm gonna go down the line so we can get this done, Commissioner Burbank, do you have any special requests?
Yes sir, I do, and it was not intended and it's not, and it's impromptu, but to address some of the questions you raised earlier. Before we were a city, we were a master planned unit development and we were governed by the rules of development, this is commercial, this is residential. And when we became a city, the city administratively rezoned it all and converted those planned unit development regulations into zoning regulations. And they further subdivided that even further instead of commercial into, this will be commercial for offices, this will be commercial for general industry, this will be commercial for that. And that was done by the city when we incorporated, so that never was C1 that strip along Howland Boulevard, never was. It was always meant to be, on the north side at least, offices that has a buffer between the residences and the Howland Boulevard. And on the south side where you got eleven hundred feet deep parcels, that was to be heavy commercial, just historical fact, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Burbank, Commissioner Stephen Caldwell, no comments, Commissioner, Commissioner Dana McCool.
I bring tidings to you from the TPO. We had some very interesting conversations at TPO this month, I want to talk about, first thing is truck parking came up for I-4. My comments were that in everyday logistics business, trucks don't usually stop on I-4 to sleep. I suggested that they go ninety-five and seventy-five with that money, that's a lot of money that we're talking about there that could be spent on truck parking there. Well, I also spoke about, I know that councilman for the county, Danny Robbins, had brought up truck parking within unincorporated. But, you know, it might, it might do us well to think about the section also as a city because we do need, whether it's a business, whether it's allowable for trucks. We have a lot of truck drivers in the area, and I'm gonna tell you something, truck drivers deliver our world, but they don't make a lot of money. So, in paying for parking, I just want us to think about that. So, that report is available if you would like that, if you'd like to talk more about that, I'm available for that also. We also had conversation about reapportionment here for monies that we have coming in, reapportionment plan scenarios. And there are, if you do not know, there are nineteen voting members that sit on the TPO and at current Deltona is weighted heavier because of population with our seat weight at eleven point nine eight percent and the next town being Palm Coast at eleven point one three percent. And what that is, when we look at the 2022 population estimate, Palm Coast because of incorporating some unincorporated areas will jump ahead of Deltona at ninety-six thousand five hundred and four population, and Deltona being projected at ninety-five thousand nine eighteen. And also brought up to the TPO that those numbers didn't sound quite right, I thought that we were more heavily populated than that. And that if they're going to start doing that, that we need to talk about because how it affects our infrastructure, Osteen and some of the other areas that we hadn't thought about. So, in talking about that, this has to do with our transportation dollars. And I would be more than happy to sit down also with anyone that they want to talk about that because, and just know this, after each decennial census, TPOs must review the composition of their membership and metropolitan planning area, which is MPA. Boundaries and some, and submit an apportionment plan that meets the requirements of statutes and there are statutes listed. Apportionment plans must include population data, total TPO area population, and the urban area population within all census designated urban areas with more than fifty thousand, which we are. Current and proposed membership and an MPA boundary map, TPO staff will lead a discussion to deliver a presentation of reapportionment plan. So, what is important for this is letting your neighbors know to be counted in the census because this does affect not only our weighted vote, but our transportation dollars, so I want you to know.
Commissioner McCool, can we get a quick vote to extend the meeting ten minutes, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
I made a motion to extend it ten minutes.
Thank you, there was a motion by Commissioner Jody Lee. Second by Vice Mayor, can we get a, just a verbal consensus?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, last thing, along with Mayor Shazé from DeBery and along with Mr. William O'Connor of Orange City, we have talked about improving our exits at one eleven A and B and also the DeBery exit. So, we have been sent information regarding landscape funding that is available to us and I know that staff is looking into that right now. And I've made the request along with the Vice Mayor from Orange City that that pond be looked at and the FDOT has sent somebody down there to look at that pond. We don't even know how much water is in there at current, so they're going to be addressing that as FDOT. So, that was the ask and I know that they did that and so I'll update you as we go along. Please join us at TPO if you would like to, if there, the information and updates are online. And, let me know if you have any concerns, I'd be more than happy to take them back to the TPO. At current, I understand also that we are, we have, we have finished our mapping with FDOT that we did get in on that study. And that we are also working on projects to present FDOT at next cycle, correct? Yes, I get correct on that also, so that is the only special report request.
Thank you Commissioner McCool, Commissioner Jody Lee. Vice Mayor Bradford.
Couple things. The dog on Tab Barak. Many phone calls, prior city manager even went down there with law enforcement, nothing we can do, can't change the ordinance. Opposely, nothing the state can do, they have nothing to enforce, right? So, my question is, what do we have to do, I don't care if we call it Barak law, we gotta get, do we need to get our state? Do we need to get our state involved and get him to try to put something through and in their meantime, is there anything at all that we can do? One, under a state of emergency, I would think, which is, I know that's where we were all going, that he should not be left outside during uninhabitable times. Can we get them during that time, one, and two, what do we have to do?
Well, I went out and looked at the dog Barak also. And, under our code, there, you know, I mean, there was a creative argument that was made this evening, but that's not what a code says. So, what I was going to do was talk to code enforcement tomorrow with the city manager's permission and see if we can monitor the situation over there as we deal with inclement weather that's coming our way. And if we can get to a point where we make a call that it's just, you know, it's, it's cruel and unusual to leave the animal in that place. Now, that we can try that, absent that, then we're going to have to make a change to the animal control ordinance and try and put this kenneling, which I thought was a really good idea, using the outdoor kenneling as very similar to what we're doing with our description of tethering. And that's a change we can make pretty quickly.
I just don't understand how it can be humane for a dog to not be given exercise, to be locked in a cage that size, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, that we have nothing on the state level that says an animal should be able to be out of that cage.
But I'm not, I don't believe we do and we don't in our ordinance, but we can create a change.
So, four weeks ago I brought this up and I was told we were working on an ordinance.
I don't know anything about that.
Okay, I am putting it on record now because I know we did, I specifically brought it up. And I was told we were going to work on getting this ordinance because I even said, how long is it gonna take and can we have it at the next meeting? This. And I'm sorry for that.
So, can we all give Vice Mayor consensus?
Please, I want consensus.
For direction?
For an emergency ordinance. To the state, we need, I don't care if we have to write a letter to our state representative.
She said we can do it.
Signed by all of us, save Barak, help, I don't care what it is, Barak law, we need to do something. Because it's not just, he's taking attention because he's right there and everybody knows him, there's many more. You know, we did the tethering, who would have thought that we had some people, you shouldn't own an animal. If you can't love and take care of that animal, you shouldn't own that animal.
Madam Vice Mayor, would it be your ask that we ask our city attorney as a collective body to do an emergency amendment to the ordinance and put that up at the top of the list to take care of that right away?
Can we make it after the hurricane? I don't want to trump hurricane, but this needs to be yes, I would like to see it at the top and I would like to see something sent to the state to see if we can't get something pushed through on a state level that animals should not be housed twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. And I would think under kenneling laws, there's gotta be something that a residential, they've gotta, you've gotta have mandates that say a residential home, that's like a full-time kennel, keeping a dog in a kennel like that. So, I, I don't know if there's anything under kennel laws and if we can pull something out of kennel laws that prohibits animals.
We have a number of options here, if everything, nothing else works, then we'll come in, I'll come back with an emergency ordinance, what?
Animal, animal shelters are probably bylaw under kennel laws as well. I'm sure a kennel or a animal, they're not allowed to keep a dog in there twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. So, so if there is a law that we can find even under kennel laws, I don't know why we can't piggyback off of that like a shelter would. A shelter, they have to take animals out every so often and walk them, right?
I don't know.
So, I would think that there would be something that we could fall under, under kennel laws on a state national, there's gotta be something, there's that. Question two, this has been brought up, I'm done hearing it, so I'm just gonna throw it out here. Can I get a figure on how much a forensic audit will cost the city? I've been told before it's probably upwards around two million, can I get verification on that? And if so, what is the commission's pleasure because I've had us all forensic on it, forensic, so, we're gonna talk about it? Let's just see what it costs and let's just, we're doing budget right now, let's do it.
Should go through the state though.
But we gotta budget it. We have to bu, we have to pay, we can't just say we want a forensic audit, we have to pay for that audit. And I believe when I talked to prior manager Peters, he's the one who told me you better budget two million dollars for this because of the staff time it's going to take.
Opaq is not gonna do it.
So, I would like to know what the cost is, if that is the will of this commission because everybody keeps talking about it. So, either we're gonna do it or we're not, let's just.
I'd like to do it too, but an outside person doing the audit.
You still have to pay for it.
Jody, hold on. To add to commis, to Vice Mayor Bradford's point, personally, I've been asking not for, only for forensic audit, I want to see an operational audit. The reason I keep bringing that up is because we, we've had a revolving door of eighteen, nineteen, whatever the now mounted city managers are. We don't know if we're paying staff adequately, we don't know if we have enough staff or if we have too much staff, what departments are staffed adequately or not. So, I, I believe what is going to benefit the city the most at this point is an operational audit along with whatever forensic audit we're doing. So, if we can get a price for both, that would be amazing.
Yeah, because we're gonna need to bring somebody in from the outside to do that and we're working on budget right now. And if we don't do it, then it's gonna be kicked off to next year because we're gonna say we don't have the budget and that's gonna be kicked off to the next year. So, I don't know if that's something, we put a million aside, we put two million aside, do we have it? Mary, don't kill me, you know, I think you're awesome, right? So, you know, if we want to get it in the next eighteen months, we gotta get it rocking right now before it hits the budget. So, that's why I'm just throwing it out, sir, I don't know if you want to call for census or not.
Is there consensus on this dice for the, to get, what is it, for a price on?
I want to know what it's gonna take to get an operational and forensic audit, what's our cost gonna be?
Do you have my support?
Right, we can't do anything without knowing what the cost is.
Do we have consensus to get that? We, we, we have, we have consensus.
Yeah, we just, we just gotta get the cost on it, we can't even approve anything yet. I'm gonna keep it short, we have, that wasn't short though, was it?
We got two minutes and we still got.
I, I pray for everybody's safety during this, whatever we're gonna call it, tropical storm, hurricane. Please keep in mind guys, when the roads are flooded, try not to drive through it, we don't need to give our law enforcement, our fire, our emergency personnel any more additional work. If we do have flooding, please don't drive through it, stay out of canoes, stay out of boats, you know, allow our services time to do what they have to do. Don't go out driving, don't go outside seeing, you'll be able to do it in a few days. Take the time to hang out with family and friends, get your board games, have fun, let personnel do their job. Glenn tomorrow, I'm sure they'll have it posted on Facebook and webpages and everywhere, the emergency hotline numbers. Just know, we have amazing staff and I ask that you trust our staff to do what they need to do and allow them to do what they need to do. With that said, prayers for everybody out there and.
I need a motion to extend the meeting another ten minutes because we still bring this.
I'm gonna extend the meeting another ten minutes.
Okay, so consensus from everyone, Stephen? Jody? Tom? Okay. So, the only special request I have is can we remove these dividers because sometimes it's difficult for me to listen to? Can I get consensus from the.
Yeah, please.
Please? Dana?
I'm, what?
Yes, no?
Whatever.
Okay.
Vice needs all.
Vice Mayor.
I didn't have a problem with that, I think Commissioner McCool because of her cancer treatments was a little concerned about germ spreading.
Just don't look me, we'll be fine.
So, I think we have, Commissioner Burbank, we have consensus, please take him down. All right, city ma, city attorney comments? No, Glenn, do you want to address this?
Yes, a couple of things. This might take a few minutes, so.
Go ahead.
One thing that, that we need to do is a declaration of state of local emergency for the storm coming. So, I need, I don't know if I need a vote or a consensus.
Motion, you need a motion?
Motion, yes.
I make a motion to declare a state of emergen, a city of emergency effective, what time, are you doing it tomorrow?
August twenty-eighth.
Now.
Effective immediately.
And it'll be good for seven days, then we would have to come back to extend it if necessary.
Effective for seven days.
And it would be, yes, once y'all vote on it, then the mayor would sign it and we would move on with that.
Easy peasy.
I just finished that, just in case they all approve.
Steve seconded.
Okay, so we have a, just so it can be official, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Bradford and a second by Stephen Caldwell. Can we please do a simple vote of A, raise your hand? Nay? It's unanimous, you have your state in emergency.
Okay, thank you, a couple more quick things, I know, you know, we're, we're going into this storm and, you know, with the city manager's search, it's very important to me and you all and the residents. With that, I invited the city manager from city of DeBery again to get up and speak just a couple of minutes, him and I have been conferring back and forth. Went to a meeting with the other city managers in Volusia County the other day, got a lot of helpful information, a lot of helpful hints, advice if you will. And, again, I've conferred with Carmen and a couple of other people, so Carmen, do you mind?
Mayor, commission, appreciate it. Your interim city manager and I have been conversing back and forth regarding your city manager's search. We, we met over with the, had the opportunity to meet with the Volusia County Managers Association, that's all the county managers, excuse me, the city managers inside the county and also the county manager. Got their recommendations as well, what the best process would be for th, this community at this particular time. Most and everyone had, had agreed that the best process goes to hire a firm. That the firm is probably the best option to be able to filter the applications based upon the criteria that's set by, by council. And, and your, your firm can recommend those criteria such as bachelor's degree, masters, masters. Glenn and I have been working on also providing some benchmarks of about seven or ten different advertisements. And typically they range from bachelor's or master's degrees to ranging from five to ten years of city manager's experience. And, and some very other variables that go along with that. But with that, we also had recommend that with a firm, somebody who's currently employed with another city can enjoy the confidentiality as it's going through the firm's process. And then when, when the, when the firm does recommend to the council, the finalists for the, then that's when it becomes disclosed. And you get, you might get more encouraged, city managers who are currently employed, who are looking for, upgrade their, their career. who are currently employed, who are looking for upgrade their career, to be able to apply, and then it becomes public once the advertisement or the finalists are disclosed to the council, and they'd be more inclined to apply when you have that kind of confidentiality. One of the third things that we talked about was obviously not having staff involved in the filtering of applications. That it simply, it puts the staff at a disadvantage of selecting their own boss, and it puts them in a precarious particular situation, particularly when they're pulling applications saying yea or nay, and then ones that they have thought that were good didn't get chosen, then it puts them in a precarious situation that there might be some retribution after the fact. And so, it wasn't recommended that staff be involved with that. I think the cost that Glenn was talking about was $28,000 to $35,000. If you use staff, you're gonna burn $28,000 to $35,000 with a staff's time doing the same process. And so, you're really not saving any money by using staff because you would burn them up by going through a particular process. And then fourthly, as far as the citizens group, is that, yes, once the finalists are provided, citizens can provide input. They'll have input when the finalists, whether you choose four, five, 10 finalists, the citizen committee can provide input regarding that, at that time, who they should interview and who you should not interview. One of the big critical things, particularly when I was hired, was also some parameters that you have to be really detailed in this whole process of responsibilities and roles. When I was hired in 2019, the council member took upon himself to do all kinds of background checks behind the firm's responsibility, and it certainly created a lot of animosity between the firm and the city. Also, citizens tend to do those things as well. They want to do background checks, they want to do all kinds of different things when that's responsibility of the firm. And so, we have to make, it's very clear that when you go through this particular process, that you identify the roles and responsibilities of everybody that's involved, including fellow commissioners, that these types of things are not done, and allow the process and trust the process to work for you. And so, these are the things that we've been discussing. Your interim city manager is gonna be recommending to you to use a firm, and I would highly recommend that you follow his recommendation of using a firm, but also identify on in writing what's the roles and responsibilities of everybody involved. And that's gonna be really key so that it's not a chaotic process, and it goes smoothly, and then you can really, step by step, make good business decisions all the way through without a whole lot of motion, because you have the facts in front of you, you have a process that you can trust, and that you have a firm that can go through and make sure that, can recommend whatever, how many candidates you want to review. So, Glenn, or council, if I call you council, I'm sorry, in DeBery, it's council, I know you're a commission.
Glenn?
Yes, and Carmen and I have talked quite a bit about this, and I do recommend that we obtain a firm, a search firm, to do this and do it right with the city manager. I know we got a storm coming up, you know, soon, that we're gonna have to be concentrating on. And what I would suggest is that, well, we have a date available for a workshop on September 11th. We come back with a workshop and define some more of these things. We go ahead with the, you know, if you, I know we have an email out there now, or a posting out there for citizens committee, and you all were going to, you know, appoint two people to that, you know, to the citizens committee. But I think that the search firm is the way to go. I think they can vet, or I know they can, they can vet the applicants, and I think it would make the process go smoother, and you're gonna get, you're gonna get what you're really looking for, I believe, rather than the city staff trying to do this whole thing.
Let me just clarify something, and I know I have two commissioners up, and we're running out of time. The committees, the reason we called for committees is because we want input. We're not asking for them to be the number one search firm, right? But I still want to hear opinions from staff, whether it's the finalists or not, and I definitely want to hear opinions from our residents. That's what the two committees are for. It's not to pinpoint when we get the finalists, both the commission, the staff, and residents have input in electing the next city manager. That's what that was for.
Right. And I understand that. I think the search firm would be able to help us handle that, you know, that coordination and all the things that we're gonna need to do.
Okay, so we're not saying remove them, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Identify their role, exactly what they need to do, whether it's interpret their resumes or anything in that regard. The process that I went through as city manager was, is that we did it on a Saturday. I had one-hour interviews with each city council member individually, and then we were publicly interviewed for one hour in front of the public. And then the public has, certainly the committee can certainly provide all the input that they can provide in that particular time, but I spent time with each individual council member in one-on-one interviews, and then been interviewed by all five council members all at the same time in front of the public. And that, and then the input is provided.
So, the intent would still be there for the committees. And the search firm, again, would set out the parameters and guidance, you know, in a good way, and able to come up with the candidates, you know, the applicants that you're looking for. So, that's my recommendation.
Vice Mayor?
Need a motion for that?
For the search firm, you just need consensus, right?
Just need a consensus for now, and then we'll be back, you know, for a workshop on the 11th at 5:30.
Can we get a simple approval by raising of hands?
Yeah, but if we're gonna do it, the problem is if we're gonna do a search firm, they don't have no, okay, we're gonna do a search firm, there's no parameters.
That's what we're gonna do on the workshop.
You do have parameters for a search firm.
So, why don't we just do it on that?
Because we can't vote to give them consensus.
You can't vote at a workshop?
Nothing's gonna happen between now and then. Why don't we just wait until then to say, look, it's a search firm.
We have to give him consensus to set up the workshop. He doesn't do anything unless we tell him to do it.
I thought you said, okay, I thought you were doing consensus for the workshop, yeah.
Raise your hands for a simple yes. Jody? Okay. We're out of time.
What?
We are officially two minutes out of time, unless somebody wants to make a motion to extend again.
I make a motion to extend for our acting city manager.
I'm sorry. Yep, I gotta put my spectacles.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor, is anybody gonna second? Second by Dana McCool? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, then the other thing is, we've been, I was just in a meeting this week with the, or last week with the union negotiations. I'd like to see if we can do an executive session on that same day, on the 11th, at 4:30, and to get some direction from the commission on the negotiations, some things that we want to bring forward. And this was, this was recommended by the attorney that we're using for the negotiation.
The workshop is at 5:30?
4:30.
Our workshop is at 5:30?
Yes, sir.
So, can we do the executive session so we don't run into the same problem we did last time at 4?
Yeah, we can do whatever.
Okay. I just don't want us to come in here, we were super late last time, so.
Yes, sir.
All right. Consensus from the commission? You have consensus.
Yes.
Anything else, city manager?
One last real fast thing, there's a, and I'll send it around, I apologize, but there's a Crime Stoppers banquet coming up in September, and I didn't know if any of the commissioners would be interested in attending that function.
Jody will.
I can send the flyer around tomorrow for y'all.
Please do that.
And then y'all can just let me know. I think we'd still have plenty of time if we talked about it on the 6th.
Perfect. So, commission, I apologize, I know city commission comments are up next, but unless everyone's okay.
I just want, I've got one thing, that's it, I just want to say thank you to everybody in the city that worked with the food, the event, the street festival. It turned out awesome. City manager, it was great to see you out there, all the different people in the city, it was nice to see you out there, it was an awesome event, chief, it was all your people, sheriff's department, everybody that came out, it was an awesome event. I know I seen some of y'all walking around, it was great, and it turned out awesome. Parks and Recs did an unbelievably job doing this, and a lot of food trucks even ran out of food. I mean, I'm sorry, my one food truck and my DJ just blew me off and never showed up, but that'd be another day. But city parks and everybody that was there, they all did awesome. City staff, bus and chops, got it done, it was great.
Thank you. I'm gonna go down the line because we have another commissioner I want.
Sorry.
So, Commissioner Burbank? You're good? Commissioner Codwell? Commissioner McCool?
Yes, September 29th, Wig Out for Cancer, public's invited. Tickets are on sale at wigoutforcancer.com. I wanted to let you know that we have a table that we are putting up for residents for free. There will be a drawing for any, for free tickets for a table of eight for residents, so I do want to put that out also. It'll also be the night that we launch Guns and Hoses calendar, that will be featuring sheriff's department and firefighters on a calendar. Those calendars will be sold with all proceeds going to local cancer charities. And I will need help with the calendar selection, so if anyone would like to volunteer to help with that, I'm just putting that out there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I'm happily married. I plan to stay that way.
Any comments? Okay, meeting's adjourned.